Good evening, Placerville. I think we're going to go ahead and get started, so if you'd like to take your seats. All right. It is 6:00, and I'd like to call to order the March 12 regularly scheduled meeting of the Placerville City Council. And if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Bonnie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughter) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Bonnie. And with that, Ms. Zito, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli here. Vice Mayor Hagan.
Here.
Mayor Mattson.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
All right. Well, good evening, Placerville. I'd like to welcome those of you in our audience here at Town Hall. I see some familiar faces as well as some new faces, so we're glad you're here tonight. I'd also like to welcome the folks at home that are watching us on Channel 2 or on our new internet streaming, thanks to George Spriggs and Roger Ruby. So it's nice to have that available, and welcome to our home audience as well. One of the privileges of being mayor is that we get to put our own flair to the evening. And as I was thinking about that, I always like to start my day with something inspirational. It kind of directs my thought and sets me on the right path. So I'd like to do that at council meetings going forward. I'd like to have a quote of the evening. And in thinking about that tonight, one of our agenda items, we will be getting a preview of the city's new economic development strategy. We'll be looking at the big picture economically. And in light of that, I came across this quote, which for me puts things in perspective. "The first step toward creating an improved future is developing the ability to envision it. Vision will ignite the fire of passion that fuels our commitment to do whatever it takes to achieve excellence." And with that, we will get on to the excellent business of the city of Placerville. All right. Announcements and presentations to the public. Mr. Morris?
Do you have anything tonight?
No? Okay. All right. Closed session report, City Attorney Driscoll.
We had no closed session tonight, so nothing to report.
All right, then, nothing to report. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any council members that have any changes? Do I hear a move for -- motion for adoption?
Second.
Removed by Vice Mayor Hagan, seconded by Councilmember Borelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Ceremonial matters. The first point, we have the oath of office to police officer Brian Ishmael. Always exciting to welcome a new officer to our force. Chief Nielsen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask if we could trail this item. He is actually coming off duty to come down here, and he's not quite here yet.
I think I see him just walking in, hot off the press or hop out of the streets.
So he just walked right up here to the front.
Welcome, Officer Ishmael.
All right, right on cue, and perfect timing as it is. I will -- I'm happy to introduce Officer Brian Ishmael. He'll meet with our city clerk right here, but a few words of introduction first. Again, perfect timing. Thank you, Brian. But we're proud to welcome Brian Ishmael as our newest police officer. Brian started with us here on March 4, 2013, just a couple weeks ago. Brian graduated from the Sacramento Public Safety Center Post Basic Police Academy in November of 2012. He's attended Kasumnas River College, and he's a graduate of Ponderosa High School. He's married with two children, and he has a background in the automotive body and paint industry. We are proud to present Officer Brian Ishmael.
(applause)
Officer Ishmael, if you'll raise your hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name.
Brian Ishmael.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
and that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
about which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. (applause)
Congratulations. I mean, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck, Brian.
I hear a little person yelling. It must be this.
Would you like to say a few words, Officer Ishmael? You can go down to the podium if you'd like. Now that you're front and center. Don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, thank you.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Well, we're so glad you're here defending and protecting our city. We thank you for your service. I always love these ceremonial matters. And with that, Chief, you are not done tonight, are you? We have a lot of exciting things.
Not at all. We are in ceremonial matter mood tonight.
Do continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Our next item, we're very excited about and excited to announce and to present to the council and to the community this evening, the National Night Out 2012 National Award, second place nationally in towns under 15,000 population. Again, this is just fantastic news for us over the period of time. It's over the last nine years, three times we've been number one, three times number two, and then number four. And so I think that's a pretty outstanding achievement for our community and just a testament to the nature and the commitment that our citizens have to participate in helping to make this a better place to live. I want to go through a couple of items here, if I may, and recognize some very important people in our community that really make this happen. So first of all, just I want to share a couple excerpts from the letter that we received announcing our placement, and it says this. "On behalf of the National Association of Town Watch, I'm pleased to inform you that Placerville has been selected as a national award winner for its outstanding participation in the 29th Annual National Night Out Crime Drug and Violence Prevention Program." Just to give you a kind of a scope of what this involves, the event involves 37.5 million people in 15,700 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. So again, they say, "We extend our congratulations for being selected among the nation's best." The other thing that National Association of Town Watch shared with us is their excerpt in their national newsletter that goes out with the announcement of all the different categories, and they write about the city of Placerville. "This city of 10,000-plus hosted about 3,600 individuals at 20 venues. The parties included 12 neighborhood events, three large apartment complexes, and five events open to the public. The Placerville coordinators made the National Night Out 2012 a huge success because of their enthusiasm and dedication to a safe neighborhood environment and in the city of Placerville." Project 365, which is a component of how we talk about our impacts on the community, concentrated on reducing negative impacts of the homeless transient population. They were successful in cleaning up several areas of illegal camps and getting about 33 people into shelter. This project has been a partnership of local government, community-based, and faith-based organizations. So again, it's just a testament to what we're doing as a community, working together in the collaboration that's involved. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize several key supporters of National Night Out in our community. There is a financial backing. It's all contributions from the community. We raised that money, and I'll talk about that in a minute, because there's some people out here that do that. But again, our big major sponsors were Carter Kelly, right here in Placerville, Marshall Foundation for Community Health, recognizing that safety is a health factor in our community, the Mountain Democrat Newspaper, Premier Healthcare, Walmart, and then two of the biggest supporters, Save Mart, which has been with us from the beginning and has been a huge contributor to making this event successful by helping to partner with the food and different condiment items that are needed to do all these 20 different venues. They've been huge. And then the local and national sponsor, we have a local representation here as well, but Target is the huge national sponsor of National Night Out. And again, they've also been a local sponsor, not just the national oversight. So really what this is about is the community. We have folks from the community, from our National Night Out team, that are out here with us. In fact, I'd like them to stand. Anybody here from the National Night Out group, please stand. I know we have a couple of folks here with us. Please stand and be recognized. We have a contingent of folks. This is part of our core planning committee that works on putting the event together. And the key to this really has been, especially the last several years, when we have fought our staffing issues and our economic issues and our resource issues, we have had to reach out to the community, find volunteers that would help us do this. And it's amazing that we have two volunteers from our S.H.I.E.L.D. group who have stepped up for a number of years to either help with the event when we had staff to do that, but more recently and more importantly, they were the key factors in actually leading the event and doing the work and all the behind-the-scenes things that we don't necessarily see, but all the planning, organizing, coordinating with myself, with staff, and making all this happen, and that's Suzanne Ball and Bonnie Rogers. So I'd like them to step forward, please. First of all, this is the award that National Association of Town Watch sends. We have about eight or nine of these things, and they're very hard to come by, and thanks to these ladies right here. We have a little token of our appreciation. I just want to, again, recognize Suzanne and Bonnie, and I'd like to read just some words I wrote to them, and I don't mean to embarrass them or anything, but this probably says it, I think, for all of our community, and that is, "Our words or gestures can never express our deep appreciation for what you have done for public safety and for crime prevention via National Night Out in Placerville. You two have been our National Night Out angels, and we thank you for your selfless contributions to this community." So those are some of my personal words, but I know that that echoes the sentiment of the community, and, you know, there's nothing that we can ever say that says thank you or appreciation for what you two have done over the years in making this happen. We have a great team. We have fundraising with Bonnie and reaching out to the community and making all those things happen, and we have planning and coordinating with Suzanne. They've been a great team. So let me say thank you to them real quick.
I'm not sure who likes what color, but you guys can argue.
And we can send those words right back to the chief, because he was our driving force. And we're going to do it one more time for the chief.
Aw.
Suzanne has agreed to be our coordinator coming up, and she's working with staff. We have staff actively getting involved and working with Suzanne to go forward. They put a lot of work in, and we're really fortunate to have them going forward, and it's my thank you to them for not letting this die out as things move forward. So with that, again, very proud of our accomplishments as a community, and I think it says a lot for where we are as a community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, a big congratulations to our police force and chief. Like Suzanne said, it is a reflection of your leadership as well, and a big thank you to Bonnie and Suzanne for continuing to lead this charge. The fact that we took number two in the nation again is a tribute to our community policing stance that our department represents, and it's also a tribute to our community, who is engaged and active in making sure that this is a safe, vibrant place to live. And so I congratulate all the citizens involved that come out and support it, as well as the support staff that puts it on. So congratulations again. We're very grateful for your efforts and look forward to another one. Are there any council members that wish to say anything?
I just wanted to say that last meeting, the chief presented all the crime statistics and, you know, what the folks have done, and he really did credit National Night Out for bringing a lot of those numbers down. So I think that needs to be said again tonight, that this was a big part of that.
Great. All right. Well, thank you again. That's wonderful.
So again, wait, we're not done yet?
I know. Item 6.3, Police Officer of the Year 2012. How exciting is that? Chief?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and we're very proud to present to council and to our community two individuals that we really know deserve public recognition. So our Police Officer of the Year 2012 is Officer Andrew Litzias, and I'd like -- he'll hate this, but I'd like Andy to step forward. You don't have to do anything yet. And I also like to recognize our Support Staff Person of the Year, Dispatch Records Technician Ashley Owen. Ashley, if you can step forward.
She's standing.
So I'd like to go through a little bit about each of these individuals and share with you a little bit of why we're here tonight. And it's, again, very important, I think, for us to recognize this outstanding effort. So with Officer Litzias first, and then for both categories, there's a formal selection process. We actually have nominations. We have a formal process that drives this. I think some of you may know that for actually 50 years, the American Legion in our community has recognized an Officer of the Year. We participate in that, and that's what has driven our formal process. We've now extended that to recognize that we can't do what we do without support staff, and we need to recognize that as well, and we're probably remiss in not doing that up until now. But we've corrected that, and we're here to recognize our support staff as well. So Officer Litzias started with the police department in 2006. He was actually our Officer of the Year in 2008, so this is a repeat performance, but it also shows the consistency of this individual. He has approximately 30 letters of commendation and appreciation in his file. Now, for 2012, Officer Litzias had a total of 105 arrests. Of these, 19 arrests were for serious drug-related offenses. Many of these arrests were a result of Officer Litzias working with informants he developed while working patrol. Officer Litzias has taken the initiative to learn how to develop these kinds of cases and work these kinds of cases, and he's consistently been one of our department's top producers each of his seven years. One of the things said in our process of this formal process, one of the comments we had is, "He's also a good beat partner and easy to supervise. That always makes good for an employment relationship." Officer Litzias has proven himself many times, especially over this past year, to be dependable, reliable, motivated, and devoted to the police department and our community. So we're honored to have Andy represent us as a fine example of what public safety is in our community. So Andy, thank you very much. Dispatch Records Technician Ashley Owen, she started as a full-time employee actually in 2007, but prior to that, she was in our youth cadet program from 2003 to 2007. So she went right from our youth cadet program to being recruited as a full-time employee, and actually, that's not the first time that we've done that from our cadet program. Probably one of the biggest things is she is responsible for our annual kids' Christmas party. She is Santa Claus's chief elf in Placerville. No doubt. She did a fantastic job with this last year's kids' Christmas party. I think there were 80 kids, something like that, that we were able to assist with our help with the kids' Christmas party. Comments included that Ashley deals with people in a very mature and professional manner. She exercises diplomacy and presents herself with the utmost of confidence and professionalism. She's grown tremendously and appears to maintain a positive, refreshing attitude in a sometimes challenging environment. As you can imagine, being in a dispatch center for 11 or 12 hours at a time, dealing with phone calls and, you know, times of idle, where nothing's happening, to massive phone ringing off the hook events. DRT Ashley Owen has proven herself many times, especially over this past year, just like Officer Litzias, to be very dependable and reliable, a positive individual, and devoted to the department and community. So we honor these two individuals tonight. We do recognize them with perpetual plaques in the department to recognize their achievements, and again, we are happy to present these two as our Officers of the Year and Support Staff Person of the Year from 2012. Thank you. (applause)
On behalf
They're both declining to speak, but
Oh. Well, on behalf of the entire city council, we want to thank you for our service, for your service. Our police force is an integral part of our community, and that was certainly evident last council meeting, those of you who were in attendance or watching on TV when our police force was here en masse, and we were looking at the benefits of having our own police force that is responsive to our community. And so we just salute you both for your excellent service and just thank our entire police force for the community policing that is such a benefit to our entire community. It's greatly appreciated. Any council members want to weigh in? Vice Mayor Hagan.
No, just, again, I want to thank the police officers that are here tonight, especially to, you know, say thank you to your fellow officers. That means a lot to us.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
It is. Yeah. Thank you. (applause) Well, thank you so much, Chief Nielsen. That was quite impressive. And with that, item 6.4, the Kings. I don't know if you've heard that they might stay in Sacramento?
Or might not.
Or might not. I don't know. We've been asked to support having the Sacramento Kings stay in Sacramento, and so on behalf of the Placerville City Council, we have a proclamation of the city council of the city of Placerville in support of keeping the Sacramento Kings in the region and the city of Sacramento. But I will wait until folks have a chance to clear out and say their goodbyes.
The little guys aren't enjoying this at all.
No. Yeah. It's all right. Thank you all for coming and supporting our crews. Oh, you want a picture? Okay. We're going to take a break for just a minute. Okay, sorry, Suzanne.
My book.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. Her book.
Okay.
Suzanne, what's a picture?
Where do you want a picture?
All of us.
Okay. All right.
National Night Out. (inaudible). Is a picture for John?
Yes. Is us?
Yeah. (inaudible). Bonnie? Bring flowers, yeah. Took a couple of them. I went out the door. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Now getting proud of the chief because he's tall. (inaudible). Count three. One, two, three. Two, three, do one more. Okay, come and kiss the plaque. Oh. Yeah, Facebook, yeah. (inaudible). One, two, three. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. I saw you the other day. You're good, Dan. You're about to proclaim the kings.
Oh, yes. Proclaim the kings, yes.
What?
Should I read this whole thing?
I would just -- I got about a couple of paragraphs.
It's not real long, though. It's not too bad. Actually, it's kind of interesting. All right. Okay. All right. We are proclaiming the kings. Moving on. Whereas for nearly three decades, the Kings have served as one of the most prominent enterprises in our region, with the ability to promote the six-county, 22-city region on a national and international scale, and whereas the Sacramento Kings are a major economic asset, employing approximately 800 individuals in our region on a full- and part-time basis, and whereas the Sacramento region has proven itself to be one of the top markets in the National Basketball Association, selling out 19 out of 27 seasons in one of the 20 largest media markets in the nation, and whereas in 2012, the city of Sacramento and the NBA reached agreement on a viable public-private partnership for a new entertainment and sports complex in downtown Sacramento that would generate thousands of new jobs and millions of dollars in revenue for the region as a whole, and whereas we believe the Sacramento Kings are an integral part of the fabric of our regional community, now therefore I, Wendy Mattson, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby strongly support keeping the Sacramento Kings in the city of Sacramento and respectfully request that the NBA act accordingly, dated March 12, 2013. All right. And with that?
No.
Yeah. Where's Mayor Johnson? With that, we'll move on to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city council. Please limit your time to three minutes, and please give us your name when you approach the podium. But before we go to oral communication, has there any written communication?
No.
No? All right. Is there anyone wishing to address the city council tonight? Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor Mattson and members of the council. I'm here tonight as a representative from Friends of El Dorado County Seniors, a nonprofit that was formed in light of the budget cuts, the program cuts, and we started out by being under the umbrella of Marshall Foundation, and at the first of the year, we're now a fund under the El Dorado Community Foundation. Our goal is to raise funds and give grants to support programs for seniors in our county. And you may have heard about it, at Christmas time, we had a wonderful event where we were able to take 28 seniors' Christmas shopping and provide each of them with a $100 gift card so that they could buy gifts for their family. It was really a fun event for everybody. And we have an article, by the way, in the Style magazine for March, there's an article about Friends of Seniors and a little bit about the senior Santa. What I'm here for tonight is to invite you all to come to the spaghetti dinner that we are having on Sunday, March 24, from 2:00 to 6:00. And the money raised in this event will go to the senior daycare. My mother went there for a year and a half in the late 1990s, and it's a very warm, caring place where people, when my mom lived with us and she had dementia and couldn't be home alone, we took her there every day, and actually, my son took her, and he got Grandma's car, and then he picked her up every day also. And it was a place where they're stimulated. When my mother was at our house, if we weren't doing something, she would just fall asleep in the chair, and the employees at the senior daycare are wonderful, and because they're a county program, their budget has been cut and they have to technically be self-supporting. And so this is a fundraiser for them. Last year, we raised $2,000 for the senior daycare. And so I've given each of you a complimentary ticket and some more information about it, and I'd love to invite you to come. And for the public, there are some flyers on the back counter, too, with information about it. It's only $10 per adult and $5 per child under 10. It's on Sunday, March 24, from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Lions Hall. I almost forgot to say that for our television audience. And people can come, even if they haven't bought a ticket yet, and have a nice meal and support a good cause. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, FYI, you see that lovely logo that's on the top of that picture? That was created by Mayor Mattson. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you for the good work you're doing with that. Seniors are a large part of our population. We greatly appreciate that. Any other member of the public? Good evening.
Just to clear up something for future reference, does one never have an opportunity to comment on proclamations? I've never wanted to before, but I'd like to ask the question.
You can do it now.
But I mean, what I mean is during the course of -- during that time on the agenda, is that possible?
Let's get an answer to that. We will
I can't imagine it arises very often.
I want to make sure I understand the
In other words, we just had a proclamation. Those items which appear under number six on the agenda, can one, can the public comment or ask questions at that time?
You could certainly do
You could certainly do your public comment right now at this time, if you'd like.
I've probably already used up my three minutes.
You're just fine, Evelyn. If you have something to say, you certainly may say it.
Thank you. I would like to make a comment. I, when I saw this item on the agenda, what the question that I was asking myself was, how much public money are the Sacramento Kings going to be wanting? And so, I checked to see how much public money they had had in the past. I can't say that I really have an answer to that, but what I could find was the grand jury report in Sacramento that dealt with the Sacramento Kings. And what I learned was that the Sacramento Kings had had $80 million of taxpayer money in the 90s. They'd had a lot of other benefits from the public. The problem that arose was that the Sacramento taxpayers were not told about this, and there was a lot of opposition to, from the public, when it came time to pass a sales tax in support of the Sacramento Kings. The public voted down two measures in, I think, I believe it was in 2006. They did not support having more public money given to the Sacramento Kings. The grand jury said very specifically that the residents and taxpayers of Sacramento had been, and I will use this word advisedly, but I don't think I'm making it up, they had been lied to. The grand jury had incredible difficulty getting the documents that they wanted to find out actually how much money the public had already given unbeknownst to them, to the Sacramento Kings. But we know that it's in excess of $80 million. I believe that we're perhaps acting in a manner which may not have the support of the people of Sacramento, but that perhaps is neither here nor there. What I really want to ask you, Mayor Matson, is when you decided to sign this proclamation, did you check to see how much money is going to be required from the public if the Sacramento Kings remain in Sacramento?
I will answer that once we close public comment. Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak? Good evening.
Hi. Robert Nelson. First of all, thank you, Police Chief, for all the years of service in this community, and for standing up for the schoolkids in this community also. I'd like to address the homeless situation, and if you could give us some transparency on what's taking place with that. Have we discovered a new location for this campsite? Yes. Yeah, because we know the registered sex offender can't stay there, and we want this for the whole community. And now, we have a new threat in the system. It's the parolee. That person who is flagged as a hazard to the police officer is no doubt a threat to the community. And we have four neighborhoods along Broadway, Willsey Way, Smith Flat, Point View, and Airport Road. And we now see our businesses are suffering from the result of this encampment. Today, we had a fight at the CRC, 242 is the police department describes it. When it comes down to it, they can have a fistfight, but they won't press charges because they don't want to go to jail, so they just say it's a shoving match. Yesterday, they had a 647 drunken public at the grocery outlet. Young families see this happening. It's very disturbing to see it. So, we had a fight today. We had a drunken public arrest yesterday. And then Saturday, at the homeless camp, they had another drunken public arrest. In December, they had three arrests for drunken public at the Haven. Must have been the holidays. But we have major concerns for the businesses on Broadway. Every day, near the Dollar Tree, there's five of them hanging out there. I called the police department. I says, is there anything you can do about it? And I was told that they can't, you have to have the business complaint. Well, I don't believe that's true, because on the side of that entrance, it says for customers only. So, the property management has said they have declared what the rules are in here. So, I don't believe a business should have to call in. I think a citizen can. And if the police chief could look into that for me, they got the signs posted on each side. It says for customers only. And so, when we have these disturbances at these businesses, it affects the young children and the family of this town. Every store is having problems. Dollar Tree with the encampment there. Grocery Outlet, as of yesterday, right there in the parking lot. Save Mart, I've talked to the manager there. He's having problems. So, can you answer, is there a new location you're looking at? Can you answer that for me today? Thank you very much.
You bet. We'll get that answered as soon as we close public comment. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. With that, we will close public comment, and I will answer those questions. And Ms. Verkamp, no, I did not look into that. I did not look into the private money. We were asked, that is, up to the city of Sacramento and their city council to rule on what they do. We were asked by Mayor Johnson to support the idea of a regional partnership of a basketball team to, because of the benefits of, to the regional community, and that's what we support. And we leave it up to the city of Sacramento and to their city council to deal with how that happens. It will not, we're not supporting it financially, and so, that is, that is why I support it on a regional basis. And as far as the homeless challenge, I too share your concerns. We all do. I think it's important to realize that the folks at the Haven are not just the only individuals that we have in our community. I do know, in fact, I was going to have it in my council member report later on, but I will address your situation now. It came to our attention this week that there was a disturbance up at Hangtown Haven. It was not from the residents. It was from a couple of illegal camps that we have discovered this week on the Upper Broadway region. And spoke with our city manager as well as our police chief, and notices were issued, I believe, yesterday to the inhabitants of that camp, and within the next, you know, next week or so, that camp will once again be disbanded and taken out. And our stance in the city of Placerville is that if you qualify to live in the Haven, which there are strict rules and regulations, you can stay there, and if you don't qualify to live there, you are not welcome in our city, and we will vigorously pursue illegal camping and root it out, and we will continue to do that. That said, Hangtown Haven will close November 2013. We stand firmly on that. We are working with the El Dorado Community Foundation, Green Valley Church. I got a call from Supervisor Nutting's office today to talk to me about the homeless situation next week, so I'll be meeting with Supervisor Nutting. Answers have not surfaced yet. The camp will close this fall. And so, that's what I can tell you there. And we will, once again, vigorously pursue and not allow illegal camping within our city limits. And Chief Nielsen, would you take just a minute to explain some of the challenges of loitering within our business districts and answer his question on that?
Exactly. The challenge, the challenge with that is basically constitutional issues. People have a right to congregate and to be into certain places that are generally open to the public. If somebody can generally enter into an area, you know, off of a public street that's open to the public and welcoming the public in, we run into constitutional issues that people have a right to congregate and assemble, and as long as they're not doing things that are illegal or impeding public ways and doing those types of things, we need to respect people's right to do that. So, those are challenges that we run into in certain parking lots along Broadway and, you know, everywhere within our community and within our country. In summary, that's basically what we're dealing with.
So, there's nothing that a member of the public can do about it, or what about a business owner if they're finding that it is impeding or making business uncomfortable?
Well, there again, you know, there has to be an actual violation of the law. They're, you know, blocking a doorway. They're blocking a sidewalk. They're blocking access that, you know, that would be something that we could take action on. If they're not in areas like that, they're not doing things that are illegal, those are the kind of the parameters or the conditions that the officers are looking for and they're weighing out as to take legal action. And, you know, we could be subject to legal action against us if we're doing things that are unconstitutional or illegal, so.
And hanging out does not constitute a violation, unfortunately.
Not necessarily, and it's one of those frustrating situations that, you know, we sympathize with what was described. We are looking for the right way to approach those situations, and in many instances, you know, in some instances, we are able to deal with those and have those people move on. And others of those instances, we're not able to do that. We're, you know, we have to respect their right to assemble and be out in public.
Yes. Councilmember Barelli?
Just one question. I had a complaint about the people were not only loitering, but they were harassing customers of the business. So, if somebody does that, then you have a legitimate reason to...
To contact them and to pursue the matter further.
Okay.
And that's what we try to do.
Okay. And also panhandling, right?
Correct.
Then they can be cited or...
Well, we can, it'll give us a reason to deal with them and find out what violations, if any, are present and deal with those violations.
Can a private citizen make a complaint? I mean, this gentleman was talking about, you know, he's not, I took it that you're not a business owner, but a private citizen. So, if I were going into one of those businesses and I was approached to give money, or they made some rude remark or something, can I, as a citizen, file a complaint?
Absolutely. I mean, if you're accosted as a citizen anywhere, and you're the subject of a disturbance, you know, basically is what you're describing, and you're being confronted or assaulted in that way, then that's an appropriate call, and we can come out and deal with that.
Councilmember Patton, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment, because we've actually dealt with this over the years on Main Street, because Main Street obviously is a very public domain. And one of the most effective ways to treat it was to dilute the situation, because people that loiter don't like to have other people around. And so, for those of you that remember, Ray Bosnic was very effective in walking right up to the groups and just saying, what are you doing? Wasn't harassing them, but just made his presence known. And so, we tried for many years to get a walking patrolman on Main Street, and, but also just the general public, if you, I want to say, just walk right out and immerse yourself around these people that are just loitering and hanging out, they tend to dissipate. And I would call on everyone who frequents any of the businesses, if you see, if you see loitering, and I know it sounds odd, but it does, if all of us do that, it tends to dilute the situation, and it makes it uncomfortable for those that don't really belong there to stay. So, I would just say, if we can't have a walking patrolman through all of our business districts, and obviously, that's cost prohibitive, then the next best thing is the public to just walk around and make yourselves known, and don't be afraid.
That's an excellent comment, and I'd like to piggyback on that. I own commercial property on Broadway, and I understand we deal, we have dealt with this situation a lot. I understand that. And one of the other proactive approaches is for property owners to remain vigilant on this. And we have a property manager on the scene every day who knows these people and engages them. So, it's up to property owners, too, to take back their property and to say, you know, this is not okay here, and to make it comfortable for the public to be there. So, I like councilmembers, Councilmember Patton's, you know, take back our city here, and that includes our residents, so.
And those are excellent comments and exactly right, and officers are frequently getting out and encountering the folks in that manner, you know, regardless of what they may or may not be doing, just because of the issues and problems there. But again, we'll respond to calls. We'll do our best to determine what's going on and deal with it as well. So, thanks.
That's one of the ongoing challenges on this issue, that we will continue to find, hopefully, find better solutions. So, thank you. All right. With that, we move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Does any council member wish to remove an item?
I have one question, and it had to do with the coloring of the master meeting calendar.
I know, it's...
There was a budget hearing, and I couldn't tell when it was. I don't know if Finance Director Warren knows it, or maybe Mr. Morris, but I couldn't read it, so.
Mr. Morris.
And maybe you can just get back to me on it. I just, I couldn't tell, so, it's orange and the pink.
I don't think it's highlighted, but I can tell. Susan put this together. Maybe she can...
Let's blame Susan.
I don't think we got the budget workshop actually highlighted, from what I can tell on there.
I'm sorry. I'm having difficulty finding that part in my agenda packet.
Do you remember what the dates are, Dave, before that?
I believe the 16th and the 30th of May.
Of May?
But I can confirm that for you.
Okay. Okay.
16th and 30th.
There was also a budget development schedule that was emailed to the council back December, January.
So, maybe we can confirm that with the council. Okay.
And can you confer, can you resend that email that you're referring to?
Absolutely.
The budget schedule?
Okay. That's great.
It could have been a problem with the duplication. The original copies that we printed in color directly from our computer to the printer came out pretty vivid, but as we ran color copies off of a copier, they faded. That budget workshop is sort of a peach, and in your copies, it may not be very different from the pink holiday and observances above it, but it's actually pretty...
It didn't show up at all.
Okay. We'll confirm that.
I apologize. That was a reproduction of the agenda.
That's a problem. We'll confirm that. All right. I do have a comment to make. I don't wish to pull it, but because it'll be later on in the evening, but on item 8.5, if approved tonight, we will have new and reappointed members to our city committees, and I'd just like to name them. On Community Pride, we will have Kathy Lishman, Christine Thiel, and Josette Johnson. And for our Historical Advisory Committee, we will have Architect Peter Wolf and New Resident Lanny Hardy. And I just want to thank these five individuals for remaining involved in their community. Their service is greatly appreciated. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on a consent calendar item? Seeing done, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Actually, roll call vote, please. Sorry about that. Got ahead of myself. Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hagan?
Aye.
Mayor Matson? Aye. Councilmember Patton?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinances. Item 9.1, second reading of an ordinance adopting text amendments to the city zoning ordinance establishing Chapter 12, the Affordable Housing Density Bonus to Title 10. Mr. Webb, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Very briefly, this is a follow-up to actually your last meeting where the first reading of the ordinance occurred. This is in regard to adopting Affordable Housing Density Bonus and incorporating that into the city municipal code, and in particular, adopting it into the zoning title under Chapter 12 in zoning. The item before you tonight is a recommendation that you waive the second reading of the ordinance adopting those text amendments and to, in fact, adopt the ordinance, and it would become effective 30 days later. The ordinance that's in your packet before you tonight incorporates the changes that were discussed at the last council meeting. There were a few edits and cleanup items that we had found in there, but other than that, it remains as presented to you at the last meeting. So, that concludes my presentation, but certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any council questions for Mr. Webb?
I just want to, again, reiterate that this is, brings our zoning rules into compliance with state law, basically, is what we're doing here.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item? Seeing done, we'll bring it back to the council for direction. Any other comments?
I'll waive the second reading of the ordinance, and I'll move to waive the second.
I was going to say, why'd you get all that power?
Vice Mayor, it's a new thing. It's part of being Vice Mayor. So, I'll let you do it, Pat. No, just kidding. I'll make the recommendation to the Development Director and waive the second reading of an ordinance adopting the text amendments to the city zoning ordinance, establish Chapter 12 Affordable Housing Density Bonus to Title 10, is known as a zone change 21203, and adopts said ordinance. as a zone change 21203 and adopts said ordinance.
And I'll second that.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Hagan and seconded by Councilmember Barelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, public hearings, none. And with that, we move on to our discussion action items. And 11.1 is to acknowledge and file the basic financial statements and independent auditors' report for the fiscal year 2011 and 2012. And we have esteemed guest all the way up from Southern California, Mr. Pun, but I will have Dave Warren introduce this item. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, tonight, we have Ken Poon, CPA from Poon &amp; McGee, your independent auditing firm, to present the city's audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2012. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Poon.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member of the city council. Once again, my name is Ken Poon. I'm the managing partner of the firm and also the partners in charge of, which has the ultimate responsibility of this particular audit for the city of Placerville. We were engaged by the city to perform the audit for the city of Placerville for the year end June 30, 2012. In this audit, actually, it's in two components. One is on the, on the basic financial statement. It's what we call the financial statement audit, which is the basic financial statement that you have on, on your hand. And the other thing on, in the, in the audit, within our scope of the audit, is what we call the single audit report. That is the, the compliance, federal compliance. And we actually finished both of them on time. And so, before we move on, as required by auditing standard, I'm required to communicate to you about the management responsibility and the auditor's responsibility on this particular audit. How, how do we do in order to fulfill our responsibility? We also go through our approach to you. And also, I'll spend some time going through the audit result and showing you some of the financials for the year end June 30, 2012. And that's pretty much will conclude the whole entire of my presentation. First of all, let's go through the financial statement responsibility here. As management yourself, you are fully responsible for the financial statement. By presenting the financial statement in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle, you also need to adopt sound accounting policies, establish and maintain internal control over financial reporting and compliance, providing evidence supporting to the financial statement and disclosure. And last but not least, you do need to have programs to prevent and detect fraud. And our responsibility as an auditor, we are here to express our opinion on the financial statement. One of the things that what, what we need to do is, we need to assess the art risk of internal control over financial reporting and compliance because you have, do have federal compliance. So we are required to test the internal control over compliance at the same time. We also here to determine the compliance with generally accepted accounting principle in the United States of the, of the America, also determine the fairness and accuracy of the financial statement presentation, issue our other opinion on the financial statement, and last but not least, is to issue recommendation to management if there, if there are any. In order to fulfill our responsibility, we basically divide our audit into four phases. The first phase is what we call the detailed planning. During this phase of the audit, we actually take a look at what we had in the past based on our experience with city of Placerville in our prior audit effort. Second thing is take a look at some external factor, especially for the current year. There's, it's really famous for, for the RDA dissolution, but fortunately, city of Placerville, you don't have this kind of issues, which is actually expedite the process of, of the audit. Also, take a look at, see if there's any new things that may impact the city of Placerville, such as see if there's any new accounting principle that may, that needs to be implemented during the current year so that we can come up with a detailed audit plan for my staff to work on. The second phase is the risk-based review of system and compliance. This is the internal control review of the city itself based on the overall understanding of the entity and identify key internal control on the, on your accounting system and compliance requirements. So during this phase of the audit, we spend significant amount of time talking to staff, making sure that we understand the internal control process and understanding the policy because even though we did every year, but we, there's always updated and always changes to the system based on, based on the changes at the city here, level here. Once we assess the risk of the, of the system, then we know how much testing that we need to, to do at our year end, which is the third phase of the audit, validation of the account balance. Can we rely on the internal control so that we can do little testing and then rely significantly on the internal control, making sure that these amount present, fairly present in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. We are not only collecting evidence, evidence supporting from the city, we also do send out confirmation to third party to confirm the account balance. For example, the bond balance, making sure that you are in, in compliance with bond confidence too, recalculating some debt service, the debt coverage ratio, take a look at the, also take, send out confirmation to attorneys, making sure that some of the non-financial amount that needs to be disclosed, we are also reported as in the appropriate note disclosure to talk about this contingency that is not really a financial matter on the, in the report. And last but not least, we are here to assist in preparing and reviewing the financial statement. Very proud of the city actually take responsibility on preparing your own financial statement. And then we actually take the review process and look at, looking at the financial statement, making sure that all the disclosure are there and then issue our opinion. Once we did all these four phases, we accomplished our objective. We have full system evaluation, including IT system in control. We also look at compliance validation, looking at some account validation and account analysis. We perform our analytical review, making sure that all the, the new accounting principle are being implemented. And last but not least, the financial report up, making sure it's in compliance with GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principle here. So the overall result, the audit result here, we are here to issue an unqualified opinion, which means the financial statement are fairly present in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. Significant accounting policy have been consistently applied. There's no new accounting principle that's, that needs to be implemented during the current year. The estimate are reasonable and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. Also, we do not have any disagreement with management. No material weaknesses and significant deficiency in internal control were noted. There's no accounting issue were noted and there's no material irregularities or fraud were discovered during our process. So let's take a look at the, the numbers, the, your financial statement. For this first slide, this is the government wide summary. This is what, what we call the statement of net asset, which is showing the total asset of $117.5 million. Very, very consistent with last year. You, last year, you have $115.5 million. Total, I believe, $66.4 million, very consistent with last year. Also, last year was close to $67 million, resulting in net asset of $51.1 million, which consists of $41 million. That's, that is your capital asset net of related liabilities. It's all your infrastructure, your roads, your buildings. Everything is included in, in this number, net of the, the long-term that, that is, that you need to pay for these capital assets. Restricted, $5.8 million, which is restricted by third party. And then the unrestricted is $4.1 million. So, take a look at the income statement. So basically, this is the government-wide total revenue. This year, the city earned about like $17 million, net of the related expense, $14.4 million, resulting in net operating income of $2.6 million, increasing your, your bottom line by $2.6 million for the city as a whole. How about your general fund? The general fund is the main city operating fund. So the total asset was close to $1.5 million, total liability about $331,000. There are some non-spendable item, which is the prepay item, the long-term receivable item that does, including this number, $284,000, remaining and assigned fund balance of $875,000. So the operating statement, the income statement for the general fund, the total revenue for, for, for this year was about $6.3 million, net of total expenditure of $6.3 million. Basically, you have about like $10,000 loss, but actually, you do have some transfer from other funds of about like $174,000. So your bottom line of the general fund increased by $164,000. Okay. So because of the city is a members of CalPERS and also you have a participant less than 100, so you don't have a standalone information of the unfunded liability for your pension plan. So I, unfortunately, I won't be able to show it to you, but however, oh, actually, I'm jumping a little bit ahead. This is one of the thing that I'm looking at is the, is the rainy day funds calculation. What we recommend is you do need to have some rainy days fund reserve in your fund balance. What is a prudent amount to be in your reserve? This calculation, we just show it to you, is take a look at the, your unassigned fund balance compared to your total expenditure. So for this year, you have about $875,000 as unassigned fund balance in your general fund. The total expenditure in the general fund was about $6.3 million. That's resulting a 14% of your available fund, fund balance for future expenditure. So there's significantly increase from last year. Last year, you only have 465 with approximately the same amount of expenditure, jumping from 7%, 7% to 14%, which is a really good result. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officer Association actually have recommended, the, this amount should be between 5 and 10%. But I do think, based on my professional judgment, 14% is really, it's, it's right on because there's still a lot of uncertainty. There's the cost inflating on a lot of different things. So 14% I believe is, is, is the best practice for, for the city of Placerville here. As I said earlier, the city was a members of CalPERS and I don't have the standalone information for the unfunded liabilities of your pension plan. However, the other post-employment healthcare plan, you do have an actuarial study that was done back in July 1st, 2009. As of that day, the unfunded liability was $2.1 million. For next year audit, you will have a new study because city of Placerville is less than, less than, is a phase three government, what we call, based on our GASP numbers, statement number 45, so that you are required to do an actuarial study every three years. So next year is, you will have a new study to show a, a new amount there. Okay. So as of this point, since the city did not set aside any money for, for the OPEP, so the funding status still at 0%. Okay. So there are a couple of new update GASP standard that I need to make you aware of, especially for 63 and 65, financial reporting of deferred outflow of resource, deferred inflow of resource and net position. Next year, the financial reporting is going to change. The, the model is not, you, you are not only seeing three category in the financial statement by looking at the asset, liability and, and fund equity or net asset. Now you have five different category. So you have the, the asset, the deferred outflow of resource, liability, deferred inflow of resource and net position. That would change the, the reporting a little bit on, on how to report certain items such as derivatives, such as spawned issuance costs. Those will be changing in, during next year. I highly recommend the city to implement 65 and 63 together, even though 65 is not due until 2014. But these two statement are interrelated and we recommend the city to implement simultaneously. 67 doesn't apply to the city of Placerville because it has to deal with the pensions plan itself. The city of Placerville does not have a standalone pension plan that is administered, administered by, by the city itself. So 67 is not applicable to, to, to the city here. However, 68, that has a major impact. We are putting the unfunded liability on the financial statement starting 2015. So CalPERS will have, still coming, trying to figure out how to provide the information. As, as I said earlier, currently, they don't have a standalone information for the city of Placerville. However, they are coming, working on that currently and working with the city at the same time because there will be extra cost to you in order for them to provide the information. So 68 is the, the, the new pension plan that will impact a lot of city and that will, you will have a full picture of the, of the financial position as when, when you see the numbers in 2015. What's going to change in this pension accounting reporting? We basically move it away from the funding basis, process to an accounting-based approach. Currently, you are basically paying your annual required contribution. If you have not paid your, any required contribution, then there's a liability recording. Now we change it to an accounting base, which you actually recognize the expenditure when it becomes due. The financial statement will display a net pension liabilities on the books. We will amortize the difference of projected investment earnings to actual investment earnings over five years. Give you an example here. We are going to, CalPERS is actually using a 7.5% as their projected investment earnings. During 2012, the investment earning is only 0.1%. The difference between 7.5% and the 0.1% is going to amortize over the five years and expense it in, in five years. What if there's changes in plan benefit or assumption? It depends on, are we dealing with inactive or retirees? We expense immediately. But if it is for active current employee, we expense it over the expected remaining service life. So we have another training session this summer and I'm, I'm sure Dave would attend our, our, our training. We'll go through that in detail. And we'll go through how to implement the, the statement number 68 because we actually assist couple cities to, to do a mock test on, once they implement this, this standard, what is it going to look like in, on their financial and also going through the note disclosure. Couple things on GASP agenda right now. They're going to take a look at the, the post-employment benefit accounting and financial reporting because the pension plan is already on there. So now they're looking at the, the other post-employment benefit plan. Economic reporting measures and GASP statement number 34 is back on the table. Actually, they will, GASP statement number 34 actually been there for 13 years already. Now they're going back and see if there's any ways that we can improve on reporting cities' financials. And that's concluding my presentation here and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Poon?
Yes.
Poon. Oh, thank you. Does any councilmember have a question for Mr. Poon? No? No? At this point? All right. Thank you so much. We'll see if any members of the audience have any questions at this point. Thank you or comments. Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would wish to speak to this item? Please state your name for the record.
Evelyn Veer, Count. Two questions. On the slide that showed the total unassigned fund balance, it grew by over $400,000 from 2011 to 2012. And I'm wondering what's primarily accountable? Where, where did that increase come from? Which looks wonderful, but what is it?
We'll get that answered for you.
And the second one is, two slides later on the, well, that's not going to help. Forget the slides. How heavily invested is the city of Placerville in derivatives? How much of our portfolio could be described as derivatives?
All right. We'll get those questions answered for you. Thank you. Any other member of the public? All right. With that, we'll close public comment. And Mr. Warren, let's a... All right, that with that, we'll close public comment, and Mr. Warren lets address Ms. Veerkamp's questions. So, the unassigned fund balance, it grew, where did the increase come from?
That's a great question. I was actually going to discuss that, and that eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that you see on page twelve, part of that was part of your fund balance to begin with from last year. It was just that we couldn't count it as unassigned, because it was a short-term receivable from other funds.
It was carryover?
It was a, so, other funds owed the general fund, but the cash hadn't actually transferred, and the amount of those payables was two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars. So, that was part of your fund balance effective the previous fiscal year. The cash was transferred during fiscal year eleven-twelve, so now, we can count that two hundred and forty-nine thousand as part of your unassigned or money fund balance that you can use as a reserve or a contingency. You can identify for that purpose. The other piece was, as Mr. Poon indicated, the hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar surplus in in two thousand twelve, that also contributed to that eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, if you take the two hundred and forty-nine and the one sixty-four, that makes the difference between the eight seventy-five and the four sixty-five. I don't know if that makes sense, but. The other thing I wanted to identify is, let's answer Ms. Veerkamp's other question. The city does not invest directly in derivatives. I can tell you that in the past, LAIF, which is the local agency investment fund through the state of California, you see that LAIF as an investment on your quarterly investment reports. Part of their portfolio, very small in the past, has been derivatives, and it's identified in their reports. And so, Ms. Veerkamp, if you want to look at LAIF, you can go on to the State Treasurers website, and that information's available there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren, for answering those questions. Appreciate it very much. Any other council comments? Will we take? Yes, Councilmember Patton.
Thanks. Mr. Poon called it a rainy day fund, and I, is it the same as what we call our, I apologize?
Fund for unforeseen circumstances.
Yeah. We call, is it the same one? Is that one and the same?
No, that's actually an internal service fund, reserve.
It's a what?
It's a separate fund. So, your reserve for economic uncertainties is not included in that. That's a separate reserve outside of your general fund. And the eight hundred and seventy, that that fund balance, in the past, we could report that just as a reserve. Now, it's more restrictive. You actually have to pass a resolution stating that that amount is identified as a reserve, and that's something I'm going to bring a recommendation to you.
Yeah, I second that.
One more comment I'd like to make, we talked about this one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar surplus in the general fund. Eighty thousand of that was due to one-time cost savings associated with the reorganization of the Community Development Department and the Community Services Department, and also the new employment rules for retired annuities. You might recall, there was a number of retired annuities that ended their employment around January of two thousand twelve. So, that savings, that's a one-time savings. That doesn't mean that this year, we're going to incur the or enjoy those savings.
All right. Excellent. All right. Well, I'd like to thank you, Dave, for your work on this. I mean, the fact that Mr. Poon's expert opinion has found no disagreements with management and no material weaknesses, no accounting issues were noted, and no material irregularities speaks to your good work on behalf of the city of Placerville, so we we thank you for that.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I'd actually like to thank finance staff for their assistance in preparing all the reports and schedules that are necessary in in developing this document, and also diligently recording and monitoring the tens of thousands of transactions that flow through our general fund, and to ensure that they're accurate, and the measurement of the city's liquid and fixed assets are done properly. So, if it wasn't for them, this wouldn't happen.
That was a very detailed report, and it was excellent. Yeah.
I'd like to move that we acknowledge and file the basic financial statements and the independent auditors' report.
A second. The move by Vice Mayor Hagan and seconded by councilmember councilmember Patton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and Mr. Poon, thank you so much for being with us tonight, and wish you safe journeys to Southern California. Thank you. All right, then.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Poon.
Can I make one more statement?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to note that, and Dave helped me out with this, but last year, recall, we we took a little bit of bad publicity based on on a late audit. That was partly due, the main thing is the single audit, which we didn't discuss very much tonight, but is a requirement regarding federal grant funds that we receive, and that single audit also has been completed. Is that correct, Dave and Ken? And will will be submitted well ahead of the March thirty-first deadline that it is due, so.
So, piggybacking your comment there, when is our next audit cycle due, after after we finish this one?
Well, yeah, next March.
Oh, next March.
Three years from now, so that we're done until we close out this this fiscal year, which will end June thirtieth, and then, we'll start this process all over again.
Okay.
I'm glad you said that, because I remember last year and the all the stuff that was said and done, and we were promised that it was going to be on time this year, and you did it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Moving forward, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Poon. All right, with that, we have an exciting item here, item eleven point two, receive an update from staff and representatives of the Economic Development Advisory Committee on progress made to develop an economic development strategy for the city of Placerville, and this has been in the works for about a year and a half, so we're, we eagerly await this. Mr. Webb.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'll I'll be providing an introduction to the item tonight, but I also will note that we have two members here joining us tonight from our Economic Development Advisory Committee. Representing the committee, we have Chris Payne and Debbie Miller both here joining us, and they'll weigh in a little bit closer to the end of the end of the presentation, and all of us will certainly be available for questions of the council. The information that you'll see in the in this brief PowerPoint that I have for you tonight is is all information that's in your in your staff report, but it's just reformatted a bit to to walk you through kind of the status report that's before you tonight. The Economic Development Advisory Committee, which we refer to in short as EDAC, was formed by the city council in January of via resolution, January two thousand twelve. The committee is is formed and comprised of seven members representing the each of the business districts, but as well as resident homeowners, business representatives, as I said, from Main Street, Broadway, Village, and Placerville Drive areas, as well as Chamber of Commerce representative. The Economic Development Advisory Committee was really formed in order to help advise the city council on economic development-related matters, and specifically also to develop an economic development strategy for the community and for the city council's consideration. The meetings of this committee are open to the public. We certainly welcome and invite the public. They're the third Friday of each month, generally, at twelve noon here in this room, and the city manager, Morris, and myself are the staff liaisons to the to the committee, and you'll find us at at those meetings as well. The next meeting, for example, is scheduled for this upcoming Friday, third third Friday of the month. The Economic Development Advisory Committee really is, again, to to focus, their focus of their efforts really over the past, you know, several months, has been to look at, guide, and develop a economic development strategy for the city of Placerville. And so, the economic development strategy itself is is in itself, in and of itself, a document, but it represents much more than just something that the city, you know, would develop and and put on a put on a shelf. It's intended to be really a living, working document intended to guide our efforts, both as the the city in our official city capacity, but also as a community, in what we are trying to do to promote economic development in the city of Placerville. The economic development strategy and the efforts of the Economic Development Advisory Committee are really focused on the needs of Placerville. The Economic Development Committee has, in their efforts to date, has looked at and and reviewed, evaluated a number of economic development strategies from other jurisdictions. Placerville not not certainly the only jurisdiction in the state to undertake these kinds of efforts, but the efforts of the Economic Development Committee really have been focused on the needs of Placerville. In other words, looking to these other example guides and documents for for ideas, for inspiration, for guidance on various ways to go about developing an economic development strategy for the community, but really, when it all, you know, boils down to it, really focusing on what's appropriate to Placerville, and not just picking something off the shelf because it looks good and sounded good elsewhere. So, that's really been at the forefront of of the Economic Development Committee's efforts. And with that, of course, you know, comes our local economy, our geography, our demographics, that are all part and parcel to that. So, the document hierarchy of that's been envisioned to date by the Economic Development Committee for an economic development strategy is kind of as follows. It's involves a vision statement, which is, you know, a relatively brief overarching statement about what we're trying to achieve, followed by a somewhat more detailed mission statement, again, setting the tone for for the effort. The where we really get into the meat and potatoes is with the goals and objectives, and that's really the point that the committee has has achieved to date, is development of draft goals and objectives, and we'll discuss those in more detail in just a moment. But those goals and objectives are intended to be kind of, you know, a handful of overarching principles, overarching achievements that the that the city may wish to to pursue and and really go after. Now, of course, with any particular goal or objective, as as you would find in in our careers and our in life in general, the same is true for an economic development strategy. You need to have specific strategies which say, which put those goals and objectives into action, and hopefully, in many cases, if not all, are measurable in some way, you know, have some perhaps metrics, some in some cases, perhaps numeric metrics, in some case maybe cases may be more subjective metrics for measuring success. So, the the strategies themselves involve identifying precisely what would be done towards and to achieve those goals and objectives, when it would be done, and who would have responsibility for implementing it. So, starting with the the vision statement, the that the Economic Development Committee has developed to date, which states simply, "Placerville is the place for economic vitality in a vibrant lifestyle that respects its historic identity." And this is, you know, fairly carefully thought out and worded on the part of the committee of the committee. The moving on to the to the mission statement, again, getting into a bit more a bit more elaboration of of that concept, but where the Placerville Economic Development Advisory Committee exists to promote business development that will create employment, expand the non-residential tax base, and provide services required to maintain and grow the quality of life for the people of Placerville in an atmosphere of intelligent growth and preservation of the unique character of the community. And I think that's really what the Economic Development Committee, you know, envisions as the as the overall overarching objective to this effort. So, jumping right into the goals and objectives, you know, to date, the where the Economic Development Committee has developed six goals and objectives in the in the draft plan, and I'll go through the each of those briefly here, and then get into the little bit more discussion from the committee members in the council. But goal one is to promote primary job growth, ready for the next wave, and that the objective there is to support job-based business through retention, expansion, and recruit business recruitment programs through working with partners and local businesses. And really, the objective here, again, to support both not only the the growth of of jobs and employment in in the community, but the retention as well, recognizing that many times, economic development efforts are are focused on on just growth, on attracting new. The Economic Development Committee has really made an effort to recognize that while that's certainly a component of economic development here in Placerville, and there's a there's certainly a a piece of that to be to be explored and furthered, that a a key element of our economic development strategy needs to be focused on retention, keeping those businesses that we have, not seeing them go go away to other communities as as really key, and working with the business community to see what needs to be done in order to achieve that end. Goal two was to enhance and diversify tourism, attraction, and offerings, you know, and the objective being to develop united community tourism direction, including a focused strategy to advance the preservation and promotion of the Main Street corridor's existing historical assets and implementation of a tourism, marketing, and promotional strategy. And this really speaks to, you know, Placerville's kind of unique position geographically along the fifty corridor, but also to its unique historical assets and natural features, quite honestly, and other attributes that really position Placerville to be, you know, even furthered in terms of tourism in the community as an economic asset. Goal three was to enhance community identity, the look and feel of a great town, to grow and improve the wow factor for every person coming into our community by investing and making great places and spaces for people to enjoy. In other words, if it's a place that people want to be, that want to stay, they it's attractive, there's, you know, greater likelihood of businesses staying, of attracting new businesses, and of furthering those those economic development efforts. You know, in in short, you know, an attractive, a well-thought-out environment, well-planned environment, you know, begets, you know, other well well-thought-out attractive businesses, and and it's reflected in the community as a whole. Four is to pursue new opportunities for retail, hospitality, and commercial businesses, recognizing that that those that all those sectors in the business community capture a greater share of business activity, and to try to capture a greater share of that business activity as the economic hub of the western slope of El Dorado County. And this is really trying to recognize and pursue opportunities, not only in one particular segment of of our business economy. Again, many economic development strategies that that you will find out there are focused on one particular segment or another. Many are focused on just developing retail, and for, you know, some communities, that may be what they're what they're trying to achieve. I think the Economic Development Committee in this effort has really been trying to focus on a well-rounded economy that doesn't just focus on one sector, but on many, and that includes retail, as well as commercial businesses more generally, which is support services, professional services as well, and then hospitality, which is a fairly wide range of includes a wide range of of industry sectors in in Placerville, including certainly the entertainment, hotels, conference industries included in that in that term. Goal five is to promote regulatory reform, again, working to identify and where feasible streamline regulatory processes which potentially constrain the retention, expansion, or location of businesses in our community. And this is something certainly that's near and dear to my heart as Development Services Director, and it is something that on a day on a daily basis, our department, for example, deals with in terms of things like building codes, planning entitlements, the interactions that we have with the business community, how approachable are we? It manifests itself in a in a number of different ways in how we as a city, how we as a community can interact with with the business community. can interact with the business community. And our actions, in large part, can have a great influence on whether a business decides to establish here or not establish here, stay here or not stay here, and grow here, which also comes with it a reputation of how we as a community, how we as a city are to work with. And oftentimes, you know, that reputation can, it can be very positive, and the positive is what we want to really, really try to grow with those interactions. Word spreads quickly in the business community, particularly when it comes to, you know, regulatory reform. But the city's not the only component of this, certainly. There's also state requirements of businesses, there's county requirements of businesses that also need to be looked at and taken into account and evaluated for potential reform. And finally, Goal Six is to explore opportunities to develop a health and wellness cluster in Placerville. And by, and by this, by the use of the term "cluster," the cluster really refers to a wide range of businesses that contribute to a particular sector of our economy. In this case, you know, health and wellness is, the idea is to promote the city as a community for healthy lifestyle and work with the medical providers and research companies to identify opportunities for expansion of the medical research, R&amp;D or research and development, and functional medicine clusters. I think that the Economic Development Committee really saw, sees the medical field, but also all of the ancillary industries that really surround around medical, that include lifestyle, health and wellness, more generally, not just thinking of in terms of doctors' offices, but research industry that has direct ties and correlations, either direct or indirect ties and correlations, to the medical field as well. The Economic Development Committee, for example, had a presentation by STEM Express, which is really a R&amp;D-based company that's established here in Placerville, and had a very good presentation from the founder of that company, Kate Dyer, at their last meeting. And it was very enlightening, I think, to both staff and the committee members to understand why did that company locate here in Placerville, what's important to keep them in Placerville, what's important to them as a business in finding a location, but also, moreover, what are the opportunities for them to interact with other businesses, like Marshall Hospital? And where can those connections be made to provide greater benefit to the overall community and to everyone involved in the industry? So those are the, that's a summary of the six goals and objectives that have been evaluated and considered by the Economic Development Committee. At this point, where we are is checking in with you as the City Council, and using this as an opportunity also to present to the community more globally what the efforts of the committee's discussions have resulted in to date. I think the committee and staff both felt this is a prudent time to check in with the council before getting too much further ahead, to see if there were additional goals, objectives that ought to be considered, or perhaps amendments to those that have already been drafted to date. The next key component to the Economic Development Committee's effort would be, again, to develop, start to develop specific strategies to these goals and objectives. You know, for, you pick any one of the six strategies and say, hey, for each of those, there could be any number of specific implementation measures and assignments and timelines associated with those. It almost becomes a general plan of sorts specifically focused on economic development. And as with any general plan document, as many of you are, I know are familiar, you have overall goals and objectives, and then you have, you know, the specifics of, okay, you know, regulatory reform, for example, we're all on board with that, that sounds great, what do we do? And so that's really the next step of the EDAC's discussions, is to embark on those, and this is really, I think, where a lot of the meat of the discussion will, quite frankly, come in, and a lot of time and energy on the part of the EDAC and staff will come in, is developing those specific strategies. And that's where there will be some need for input, even greater levels of input from the business community and the community at large. So tonight, I know that the, and recognize certainly that there's, this is a lot of information that's being presented to you tonight, and so I think there's some options for the council to consider along those lines. But once the council's input from tonight has been considered, we would, the EDAC would, you know, incorporate that input from the City Council, make amendments, make adjustments as needed in the document to date, and then embark on development of those strategies. Before coming back, and perhaps there's another check-in point with the City Council, before coming back with a final document for review and adoption by the City Council. So for tonight, I will say that the City Council, you certainly have no obligation to, here and now and tonight, to provide definitive input. I know that you're just being presented with this now, but, you know, should the council have specific recommendations or suggestions for the EDAC to consider, they could certainly start doing that. Or alternatively, if the council wishes, we could come back at a future meeting, and I noted this briefly in the report, but we could come back at a future meeting to allow some of this, if need be, to sink in a bit more, to provide a little more time for consideration. So those are just a couple of the approaches that we could take here tonight. With that, I think I'll offer to Debbie Miller and Chris Payne, if they wish to approach the council and add anything that, from the committee's perspective, I'd certainly welcome them to do that, either now or if you'd prefer to receive public input first, however you'd like to go about that.
I'd love to give Chris and Debbie the opportunity to speak now. Glad they're here. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. I'm Chris Payne, and I've been appointed to the Economic Development Advisory Committee by this council. My comments really have to do with how we work together. I'm talking about the committee. We're very diverse. I think you would want us to be diverse. Therefore, that creates debate, and that creates the kind of discussions that we need to have in order to be successful. So you've accomplished that by your appointees. I would say, we're not certain of the timeline, but that next wave that we spoke about in Goal One, that really has to do with the fact that we're coming out of the economic downturn, we feel, and we've had time, roughly five years now, to kind of let that settle in. And now it's our opportunity to be able to move forward with making the changes that we're going to need as we go forward. So that's what the next wave is all about. It's this next time period. We don't feel like we're in a hurry as a committee. Certainly, this council could establish our timeline if they wanted to, or could emphasize the timeline, but they haven't to date. Mr. Webb has done a very good job summarizing our three meetings that we've had so far. So we've accomplished an awful lot. We can thank the region, really, a lot of different entities around our area, cities, counties, helping us to speed things up by seeing what they have, but this is uniquely city of Placerville, the way we see it. And so we've had to modify to make it appropriate to the city. Let's see, what else I want to tell you. There is this also much larger effort on the part of the county that I had to find out about, because I wanted to make sure that we were consistent, as a city, to what was happening on a more county basis. As you know, they've changed their name recently, adding the word "community," so it's Community and Economic Development Advisory Committee, or what we call CDAC. And that was to emphasize the general plan implementation aspect, that is, to have community ID, community identification, as making that as an important ingredient in the success of the implementation for the county. I also know by having gone now for the last four months to the meetings, to a lot of the meetings of the counties ever, that we're consistent. Meaning, I feel now, being able to sit as the city's Economic Development Advisor Committee and feel like I understand a bigger picture, and that I see that we fit in very, very well. So I'm not certain Debbie wants to add anything more this evening, but that's kind of my overview. And also to emphasize, as Mr. Webb has said, there's no hurry tonight, whether you would like to kind of look at what we have. We do meet on Friday. We're just going to discuss probably what happened tonight, and then go forward, maybe looking at some of the strategies for some of the goals. But in essence, a workshop or any kind of get-together, we might have a little bit more time, so we don't feel rushed about it. So that's my comments tonight.
Thank you so much, Chris. Appreciate it. Debbie, do you want to say anything? Good evening, Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie Miller. I'm also appointed to the Economic Development Committee Advisory Committee. I don't really need to add anything to Chris's comments, except that this is a really exciting time for our city, and I think by working together, we can really do some great things and direct our future. So I'm excited and looking forward to it. Thank you.
The whole council thanks you and your entire committee for all of your efforts. This is exciting stuff. And at this point, does the council have any questions for the committee or staff? Vice Mayor Hagan.
Could you close up?
Oh, thank you.
I just, the one comment I know is something we've talked about, Mike and I have talked about several times, is development fees and process. And I know we're, from what I've heard from the, some individuals who have some business plans in there now, we're moving very fast and able to accommodate. If the economy turns around quickly, are we going to be able to move faster or keep up? I guess that's one question, and that's obviously going to be a personnel issue down the road. But is what I've seen in talking to other cities that have had a large growth and large reserves, two in particular are new, both the city of Citrus Heights and Elk Grove, they, when they've gotten to a point where they've had to expand, they use outside services, contract services, so that we're not taxing our personnel, and at the same time, we're able to get high-quality people at a reasonable price. And down the road, if you, if that growth is sustained, we can bring them in. But if we had a big jump in, just say, commercial activity for a while, it would be not too prudent to hire permanent employees, because those projects come and go, and they're large, they take a lot of manpower, but then they also subside, just because we don't have that much space, I mean, the reality. The other thing I'd like to see us look at, and maybe the Economic Advisory Committee is the place to start, and I know the city, the county's working on that right now, is their TIM fee. I read something about TIM fees the other day in The Democrat, an article that was, while I was out of town, and I thought there was an error in there, because it said they didn't apply to the city, but I believe ours are based upon county fees. And TIM fees, even though we are a separate entity, I believe that Measure Y applies to us also, and the TIM fees, part of our TIM fee, traffic mitigation fees do go to the county, or at least are based upon the county fees. So anyhow, that may be addressed, or should be probably more properly addressed, at the Economic Advisory Committee, but it's something that I think we need to review again at this level. That and all of our development fees. I'm not saying they should go away, because the alternative is, especially when the road fees, the cities that don't have the large TIM fees, like Sacramento, for instance, have a half-cent sales tax. So there's a push-off, so you have one or the other, or both. You don't have, typically, you don't have both. So I just think that's an area that I'd like to see us concentrate on, take a look at, and maybe the Economic Advisory Committee is a good place to start.
Yeah, and if I may just respond briefly to that, yeah, I think, and I think those particular notes and comments, I think, speak very well to what would very likely be incorporated into the specific strategies, timing, responsibility. That said, I think there are efforts that I know that I have discussed with the City Council that are underway concurrently, if you will, that we don't want to put a hold to or put a stop to in any way, but the economic development strategy may, in some ways, kind of, they may kind of catch up with each other and then merge appropriately, I think, with respect to, you know, our entitlement review processes and efforts. The, just briefly on the TIM fees, we do have our TIM fee that is city-specific, that was developed in conjunction with our traffic engineering consultant, Fair &amp; Peers. Right now, we are operating on an interim fee, which is, you know, a notch lower than in what it may otherwise be. And so it is, but it also is different than that of the county.
I know.
And, but yeah, yeah, so just briefly on that, so, thank you.
But, yeah, the other thing is the goals. I'm glad to see that, I think you guys did a great job on the way you've got the six, seven goals laid out, six goals. I think we're looking in the right direction. And I think the tourism, the health industry, the community identity and those things that are, a lot of this, the retail hospitality area is an area I know that we've got a couple of motel hotel sites, and if we were to break one of those, we certainly wouldn't hurt anybody locally, because it is very difficult to get rooms up in this area at this point in time. They're, you know, they're almost nonexistent for overnight guests, for weekends and so forth especially. B&amp;Bs are very active, very busy, and I think that combination, I just think that if you have a nice Marriott or a Holiday Inn Express, something like that, that you're going to have good fulfillment, and I think it's going to enhance the other businesses around, because if there's places to stay and people for things to do in the tourism area, and we have the tourism, we have the wineries, we have the Apple Hill, we have the ag stuff going on, and rural-urban connection is real, and I think people get away from town for a night or two, this is an excellent place to come, and I think providing a couple more key places would help this, it'd help our economy at the local city level, from cash flow standpoint, from the TOT, but it would also help all of the other businesses in the area, because those people not only stay the night, they spend money at restaurants, and we've got a good variety going, and it'd be great to have a few more. So that, those are my comments, and again, I really appreciate the hard work this committee has done. I hope you don't get confused with the Arts Council. Somebody's going to show up here with an easel one of these days on a Friday, but that's okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hagan. Our city manager had some comments.
Just a quick one on the issue of looking at our TIM fees. I think that fits very well under, it could very likely be a strategy under regulatory reform. It's not exactly the same, but it'll fit under there, and that's something that I anticipate we'll be adding to that as we go through that process, so.
Great, thank you. Before I open, public comment on this item, Councilmember Wilkins, do you have any questions? Councilmember Barelli.
Yes, I also would like to say congratulations to the committee. It shows you really worked hard, and I, along with Chris, have attended the county economic development. And what that, Carl, you mentioned about EDAC, that was another reason they changed the name, is because it was being confused, and I started thinking, maybe we need to change our title, too, you know, it's like, maybe. One of the things that Chris mentioned, and I really would like to see it happen, we've just been presented this tonight, and I would like to see maybe... just been presented this tonight, and I would like to see maybe, be given a little bit more time, I wouldn't mind if we can, I don't know what legally and whatever, if we can have a workshop with the committee, and maybe explore this just a little bit further. I think it gives us a little more opportunity to express our own individual wishes and whatnot, in a workshop manner. I also wanted to say, I think it's been about, it was before this committee was formed, but I was a member of the SEDCor when we went to Citrus Heights, and we had a wonderful presentation from them on how they, and Carl, you did mention Citrus Heights, how they went about developing their whole situation, and I emailed it to Susan, and I think she put it in her archives, in your files, and maybe getting them to, their speaker or whatnot, to come up and give that presentation. And I know they're a lot larger community than we are, but it was really, it was very informative how they went about, you know, forming their whole economic development. So, anyway, that's, I would like to see us perhaps have a workshop with the committee.
Good thought, thank you. Councilmember Patton.
Thank you to the committee for the work and what you've done, I feel like I'm looking at something that's, I know you're calling it a draft, but there's been already so much stuff has been digested and clarified, because I went straight to the notes and went, okay, well, what are the current, and I would love to do a workshop, I think a workshop where I could interact and interface, because one of the things that I don't see in the notes or somewhere, is the importance of Placerville setting being the intersection of Highway 49 and Highway 50, and I think that is integral to this idea of economic development, we are just so centrally located, and it's such an important part of our location, is this whole 49 and 50. And then the idea of an objective two, or goal two, I kind of wanted to see something that said Apple Hill or the wineries, and what it says is preservation and promotion of Main Street corridor. And we, Placerville is more than just the corridor's historical assets, we have lots of historical assets, and I felt like that was a little bit specific to one area, and no offense, but Placerville, but the Main Street area already has a marketing program that is very effective, and does a good job, and uses a lot of the, uses a lot of promotional time and activity, and I don't, I don't see, I don't see this group really as, should be really maybe focusing on Main Street as much as perhaps a little bit more global, within the city limits perhaps, you know, for sure, but I just had, I had a concern about that, and maybe a workshop would ease my mind on that a little bit, but that was, so that was my input.
Great, thank you so much. I do have a couple of comments and some, a question. First of all, because of the council sentiments, thank you for the inordinate amount of work that has gone into this thus far, we recognize that and appreciate that. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Morris and Mr. Webb for meeting and supporting these efforts on Fridays, we're closed on Fridays, and so they're working on their own time, and I really appreciate you working on your day off for the economic vitality of Placerville, we really appreciate it. One of my questions is, I love the fact that this effort was started with a neighborhood chat, what, last year, and thank you for putting all the comments from that on the back of the staff report. My question is, how did that play into developing the mission statement and the vision statement? And can you just kind of briefly, briefly, you know, describe that process of how you got from the neighborhood chat to this?
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and I'd certainly invite either Member Miller or Payne to speak to it as well, but, you know, I think from a staff standpoint, the neighborhood chat, and from a timing standpoint, I also, you can use this chance to clarify that the Economic Development Advisory Committee has been meeting really since August. And so, not to imply that they've been meeting for the last year on this, and this is our first check-in, it's, they've been meeting since August, the first meeting, a couple of meetings really is, the first meeting in particular is kind of getting, getting ground rules underway, and, you know, selecting a chair and vice chair, et cetera, but they really started right in at their following meetings. The input that was received at the neighborhood chat from July of last year, I know that we had many members of the EDAC at that neighborhood chat also, and so they were there themselves to hear a lot of this input firsthand. But we provided this information to the Economic Development Committee, just for their, as far as background, as far as, you know, what are some of the things, sentiments that we are hearing from the community at the grassroots level, as to the questions that were posed at that neighborhood chat. And I know that, you know, council members were certainly at that chat as well, but really trying to, you know, pull out with these specific, you know, kind of targeted questions that we had developed at that chat, or for that chat, really trying to draw out some of the thoughts and aspirations of the community on these questions that were posed. So, the Economic Development Committee, I think really took a lot of this, a lot of this to heart, but also drew upon their own, you know, observations, their own experiences from doing business in the community, from their interactions in the community as well, so, I think that pretty well summarizes how they used it.
That's great. Yes, Chris, you have a comment to that process?
Staff put the notes from the chat in a form that we all had a copy, and so we had that as a useful tool, to be able to go back over those, which we did, to recognize exactly what was being emphasized, and then how we could go about making that into one of our goals, and making sure that our goals are reflective of things that we had heard at the chat. So, that was, it was a very important aspect of it. But one of the things that I thought I should also mention, when I talk about the general plan of the, now of the city, so we have general plan, and then we have land use, and we have zoning. So, some of the things we'll be looking at, I know staff has already been doing this, but we'll be looking at then, it's almost like taking an inventory of what is available, and then, and then turning that into the use of it, the usefulness of it.
Great.
We'll be looking at that to see if there could be any modifications that might need to be taken up, as part of our effort, or maybe post our effort, to see how we can get back to some of the things that we know that maybe we're not utilizing effectively, and that'll work itself out over this time period that we're gonna be working on this.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, that's great. I do have more comments, but at this point, I'm gonna open public comment up, would anyone like to speak about our economic development strategy? Good evening, Sue.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Manchin, and members of the council. Could we put up the very first slide? Notice that on the seal of Placerville, what have we got? We have a gold banner. We are the closest city to the Gold Discovery Park. I don't see that anywhere in our economic development plan. There's no place to stay really in Coloma except for Campground. We're a hub. I think that junction between Highway 50 and Highway 49 is something that is important, as you pointed out, and that we could use as part of our economic development, is if we want people to come and explore the area around Placerville, and Placerville itself, we need to emphasize the fact that we're only seven miles from where gold was discovered in California, that resulted in the largest land migration that's ever been seen in this country. We can emphasize that, here's the place where you come to stay, you can go see the Gold Bug Park, you can go see the place where gold was discovered in California, you can go to Apple Hill, you can do the wineries, there is a, just a whole, I'd use the word "community," but a whole variety of things that can be done from Placerville, and I think that needs to be part of our economic development criteria, that we use, part of our goals to set up is to let people know what we have here. Maybe that's part of the Chamber of Commerce, maybe that's part of the advertising, but I think it's one of the things that, for economic development, we need to be aware of. And the other comment I'd like to make is to be very careful that we integrate the economic development with the Planning Commission, so that there is a linkage there, and we aren't doing, we aren't at cross purposes, that the two can move forward together, and not, not be spinning wheels, and not be duplicating efforts. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we will close public comment, and just like to briefly answer, Sue, your comments, I certainly, we all think we all share your thoughts, that Coloma and all of the attractors of this area will be emphasized, and I think tonight, we're talking, you know, big picture, and I'm sure all of those excellent ideas will come into our strategies, our implementation of this big picture, and certainly, we will keep those in mind and highlight them going forward. And her question about how do we integrate these efforts with the Planning Commission, Mike, can you speak to that? That's an excellent comment and question.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's one that does take a bit of thought in terms of, in particular, how it pertains to the specific strategies, once those are developed, to ensure that the, ultimately, upon adoption of the economic development strategy itself, that that is, you know, somehow looked to and integrated as a guiding document for the city, which in, as that guiding document, I think ultimately, we'll see a number of different strategies that do pertain to, for example, land development, to certain, wanting to promote and encourage certain types of business activities, things that would come, where individual projects ultimately may, and policies for that matter, and general plan and land use issues, may ultimately become before the Planning Commission. And so where I think we need to start sooner rather than later, start putting some thought into the implementation of the economic development strategy, is how does this document line up with, for example, the general plan? The Planning Commission is involved in helping develop the general plan, and to implement the general plan, in reviewing individual projects, I think there'll need to be some guidance in discussion, I think, with the city council and the Planning Commission ultimately, about how, what the council's expectations are for, how does the economic development strategy get weighed in the grand scheme of zoning, of general plan, of the other aspects of the community, guiding documents of the community that the Planning Commission takes into account. And so I don't have the answer, certainly tonight, but it certainly is a topic, and I think a very good one, a worthy one, of some real healthy discussion, and perhaps at a workshop setting.
That was a great answer. Well, I do have, I think I will take this time to give my comments before we go on to others. I found this document to be very user-friendly in its format, I liked how approachable it was, it wasn't theoretical, it was approachable, it was warm, I liked that. In doing my homework on this, I had to clarify for myself, what is a mission statement, and what is a vision statement, and what are the differences? And that was helpful to me in reviewing, you know, where we're at with this. And found out that a mission statement defines why the committee exists, and identifies its function with measurable objectives. And so I looked at this mission statement in terms of that, and it certainly did that. This mission statement speaks to, you know, jobs, tourism, the revenue, the needed revenue for infrastructure, the revenue for community enhancement and amenities. It speaks to the fact that the efforts of this committee are for us, they're for the community, they're not for the tourists coming by, that will be a byproduct, but it is for us, and I love that. It speaks to the fact that we will grow with wisdom, which is important, because towns that don't evolve, die, and it talks to the fact that we will preserve and appreciate who you are, who we are. So, I think you did a phenomenal job in encapsulating the sentiments of this community, and I really commend you for that. And a vision statement is the articulation of a dream, of where we want to go in the future. And in light of that, the vision of that Placerville is the place for economic vitality, and a vibrant lifestyle that respects its historic identity, and I think you've nailed that, I love the fact that we see ourselves as economically vital, we're not quite there yet, and yet that's where we're gonna go, I love that, and the idea of a vibrant lifestyle speaks to the resources that we have, and the amenities, it's very broad and inspires, you don't want to be here. I would have one addition to that, and, you know, I love the idea of a workshop, that we can really, you know, knock this around, but we are more than our history, and that certainly, that's, it's an important part of who we are, and yet we're more than that. So, I would say a vibrant lifestyle that respects its historic and hometown identity, because I think time and time again, our residents and our community appreciates the fact that we're a small town, so we're not just an historic town, but we're a hometown, that's my only thought for that. And so, the big picture, I think you have just nailed this, in goal three, I know there's a lot of talk that the look and feel of a great town, I love the fact that you've identified as the wow factor, that just, that's just cool. And I would like, as we develop strategies, to incorporate the arts specifically in this goal, because we are a rich artistic community, and I know EDAC would like to see that in here, but certainly the, the other EDAC, the arts certainly enhance the wow factor of a community. So, those are my main comments, and I just think it's fantastic, and can't wait to go forward. So, so other comments by councilmembers, Councilmember Patton, start at this end, no? Councilmember Barelli?
Well, along the lines of what you just said, if you remember when you and I had the meeting with Cleve, and we-
Which one?
When we talked about making our little statement, and up here at the, and it says "Placerville, a unique historical past forging into a golden future," kind of along those same lines that, you know, our past and our future, yeah.
Our own city manager.
Anyway, I, like, I've already made my comments, and I really would like to have the workshop, that's me.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor Hagan, any further comments?
No, just the scheduling workshop, I'm looking at, your next meeting is March 15th, when's the one after that? I mean, I know not everybody can make it at noon on a Friday, but, sorry.
Well, no, but I would also like to say that it's very difficult for members of the public to come at noon, and if we're gonna have a neighborhood chat, if we're gonna have a more of a-
Workshop.
Workshop, I would really like to see it in the evening.
I would too.
Or on a weekend, I mean-
Well, I-
I agree.
I would defer to the committee, because they're, like I said, I don't want to take, I don't want to steal their time, their time is precious, I appreciate what they're doing, they're volunteers, and, but, but I agree, it would be fine to do an early evening workshop.
And perhaps the committee could work with staff in coming up with a couple of dates, and then you can get back to us and set that up?
Yeah.
Is that the best way to do that?
Yeah. I mean, how often do you normally, do you mean every month on the Friday?
Yeah, it's the third Friday of each month, so the next meeting after March 15th would be, for the EDAC at least, would be April 19th. But I would tend to agree about, you know, looking at an evening meeting time as ideal to want to really engage in that discussion.
Right.
We'll look at dates, at potential dates, see what we can get that works out.
If we can bring up to them this week, I think that'd be fantastic.
That'd be great, you're good timing, thank you so much. Councilmember Wilkins, do you have any comments? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we receive the presentation on the economic development strategy, and that we move for a neighborhood chat.
A workshop.
A workshop.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Patton, and seconded by Councilmember Barelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion- Aye, motion carries and once again, we thank you so much for all your efforts and we look forward to an engaged discussion on this with our community. Thank you again. All right, let me find my agenda here. All right, 11.3, this is another exciting item, review and select the top three focus projects for grant funding over the next five years. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One of the emphasis for this at this time is the fact that Vice Mayor Hagan will be going back to cap to cap and will have an opportunity to-
Can I get two votes?
Yeah. We'll have the opportunity to visit with some of our federal legislators back there, but also visit with our lobbyist, David Church, while he's back there. I might also add, we'll have an opportunity at our next meeting, March 26th, David Church will be here to speak to us, so in a couple of weeks, he'll be here. But I thought, you know, I've been looking at this for quite some time, just been a lot going on and felt that it's important that we, as we talk about being ready for the next wave, et cetera, we should also be looking at, you know, where is our next focus, where should it be? And I presented or provided six options, I believe there's six here that I've given to you, and these were just some that we came up with on a staff level, but I want to emphasize that, you know, this list, as you know, could go on and on forever.
Exactly.
But I think it is, I think it is very important to try to narrow it down to the top three. I think that those, let's see, I think Councilmember Borelli and Councilmember Hagan are the only ones that have been back to cap to cap, but I know that when they go back there to meet with congressmen, legislators, et cetera, it's very important to be very focused on what you're looking at and what you're asking for. And I think by narrowing it down to what I want to call the top three, it gives us that opportunity to really focus in on those and based on what you provide to us as those top items tonight, staff will work on preparing, presentation items, et cetera, that we can, that Councilmember Hagan can take back with him to Washington and present. And then we can further use that with our state legislators, et cetera, as focus and we as a staff can focus on those items. So with that, I will, I think you're familiar with most of these projects, but I'll walk through them quickly and then I welcome additional ones that you think you might want to add to the list and we can have that discussion and hopefully narrow it down to those top three. The first one, of course, is Western Placerville Interchange. As you know, that's been ongoing for some time, I think we need to keep the, because we are in the middle of that project, we need to keep a focus on that one. And I believe that is also going to be one that the EDCTC and the general cap to cap group is including as part of one of their transportation projects, so. The second one, based on recent discussions we had that included in here, was renovation of Old City Hall. Now, there's a lot of discussion with this council, I think we can say is not, or it's kind of in the crossroads right now, are we going to continue to pursue selling that facility? We've had some discussions recently about possibly hanging on to it and trying to renovate it and using it for a, for a public use, public building. So I put, for that reason, and whether or not we decide to sell it or whatever we would do with it, renovation of it either before that happens is probably something that we should consider, so.
Well, how would you present that then? I mean, what are we asking for?
Funding to renovate it.
To see, oh, okay, so that's the specific, okay.
Stabilize.
And then if we could see that we could get it, then we could, okay.
Yeah, yeah. The next one is to look at the implementation of the Main Street, or improve the Main Street infrastructure in terms of water, sewer and storm drain. We know there's some improvements that are necessary. And then implementation of the streetscape infrastructure plan, we know that that's been out there for some time, I think it was 2009, does that sound right, the date that's on that plan, I believe? And, but one of the keys that I looked-
No, it was probably 1998.
It was-
No, there's a more recent one in 2009, the streetscape plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And I gave you some, I believe, some attachments from that plan, but I have the entire plan. But my point is that before we can do some of those streetscape plans, for example, the bowl bouts that are, that are in there designed at crosswalks, you really, before you can do that, you need to get these infrastructure problems taken care of, because otherwise you tear up your improvements when you come back and have to repair a water leak or whatever. So we really need to look at and doing those. So this kind of includes both of those, so I've shown the water sewer and storm drain improvements at the 350, 300, and 200,000. And then the streetscape, separate from that, is about 1.7 million, is the estimate that's provided in the plan. So with those together, you can see it comes about $2.5 million. The next one is one that's been on our horizon and the chief is going to speak to this one whenever he needs to, so, and that is the-
We just have to look at him.
A new public safety building, either through remodel of the existing facility or construction of a new facility. So I think you're familiar with that. There are some estimates out there of what that would take, and I put in here about $8.4 million when you add up construction, planning, engineering, drawings, architecture and stuff The next one is a little bit smaller one, but one's a priority for us that we really don't have funding for right now, is removing the sewer pipe that is currently in Hangtown Creek, presents some risk for us in terms of if that were ever to break and flood the creek, could be a real liability for the city. So it's an important project that we really should look at doing something on.
What is the location of that?
To move it to?
Yeah, what, what location? From where to where?
Oh, it goes approximately from, Mike, do you know on that one, I want to say from, it's above, it's, it's approximately at Main Street or even above, or, excuse me, Cedar Ravine or even above Cedar Ravine, I believe.
Yeah, Cedar Ravine and actually just through-
No, going down this way, through-
Clay Street, on down, actually, actually, just, just be-
[music]
Wow, okay. That's what the computer has to say about that. No, it's actually just down through Clay Street, in that, in that area is where the main, the main segment is looking to relocate.
It's along the walking trail?
I apologize, I thought that was already done. Kentucky Fried?
There was design work.
There's design-
I thought we did it when we built the freeway, I thought we pulled some of that pipe out.
Some of it was, there are other segments that remain though, within the creek. In fact, if you were to walk out right here and just walk just up to, towards Clay, you would see, and look down, you would see the sewer line right there in the creek. It does present a significant liability. We do have design and design plans actually underway for relocation of segments out of both Cedar Ravine and Hangtown Creek and to be able to at least have plans in place for what, where they could be relocated to. And so that, that is underway actually currently, along with the environmental for that. And so the, those, as Cleve states, I think, in the staff report, you know, the potential liability there is of course, you know, environment as well as, you know, the environment in the creeks themselves, heaven forbid a significant leak occur, but also monetary in terms of fines that the city could, could experience from, from a spill, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morris, comment?
And then the last one is one that is actually part of the Broadway multimodal plan, which is to realign and improve the US-50 Broadway off-ramp in the eastern part of Broadway of the city. And this is the only one that we need to do some more work on, because I don't have a cost estimate for that one, but it is identified and it is one that we have looked at and could be a significant improvement if you've seen that, that intersection quite often, can be a bad one for, especially for turning left coming off that, that off-ramp, so. So with that, those are the ones that we had, we welcome your comments, questions about these, we'll try to provide answers to those and then also if you have additional items you think that should be part of the consideration, we're open to those too.
Thank you. And tonight, you're looking for the top three, for us to have a consensus on the top three focus projects. So with that, I will start to my right and Councilmember Borelli.
Well, I guess I'm going to have to ask if we, one of the things that is Hangtown Creek has been on our list for years and years and years, improving it and making it a crucial point of, of bringing people, you know, having like a walking path along there, beautifying it, et cetera, et cetera. But I guess before we did that, we would have to get the pipe out of there. So maybe that's important before we can go along that. But along those lines, and I think that we have indicated to our, to David Church, that these are things that we are interested, I hope he's still got that list of things to be watching for, that, you know, like, like the public, the building for the chief and, I mean, we've been telling him about this for a long, long time. So I, again, we're presenting these things, that's been on our list and David's list for years, so David knows about these and what I'm saying is if we present, you know, this, is it just futile to, I mean, you know, because he knows about this and should we get his input to what he thinks we could go for and maybe get some results instead of a dream, a wish list?
Well, I think that, and David has asked me, I will say, on occasion, you know, what are you looking for? So he has made that statement to me in the past.
But he knows what we're looking for.
He does, but I think reemphasizing and making a strong statement to him and emphasizing the problems and what we need, it does not hurt and can really-
Oh, and I understand that, but I mean, you were looking for three top, you know, things and I'm just wondering whether we should maybe get his input too and what the top things are that we, maybe he sees a possibility that we can achieve, you know? That just was my thought.
Sure, sure.
And then the, the other thing, you were talking about the recommended Broadway off-ramp design. When we met with the committee, what was, what was the name, the official committee that we, the walking group, the sidewalk that we met with?
Today, or yesterday.
Yesterday, Mike.
Right, the, well, it was-
It doesn't really matter, but what-
Yeah, I'm trying to recall it myself, it had a long acronym.
It's all right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
But no, it was organized through the EDCTC and then in conjunction and funded with, with monies through EDCTC and in concert with UC Berkeley Extension.
Right, so I, and the whole reason for my bringing that up is that I think we kind of saw some of our ideas, that they kind of saw it in a different, a whole different realm and I'm wondering if, on these kind of situations, if maybe we need to go a little bit further in getting these people in on it to see if, whether that's right to pursue it this way, because some of the things like, especially down here on Canal and Spring Street and what was done with Caltrans, et cetera, some of the, they, they were just appalled at what had been done. What are you referring to? The way, the, the long length for cross, for pedestrian and the way the, the roads, the turns that were put in and, you know, all these kind of things. And so it just made me, when I saw this, I thought, oh, I wonder, you know, if maybe we should have a little bit more consultation with other groups before we pursue things. Anyway, that's my input.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Patton?
I looked at it a little bit differently than Councilmember Borelli did. I looked at it as leveraging monies or whatever funding Mr. Church comes up with, what would be the best, what would encourage more funding? And what we saw when the Highway 50 operational improvements came through, we saw an increase, actually, I'm going to step back for a second, when we passed, when we got the Revitalization Action Plan, which identified the Highway 50 operational project and the city and the property owners along Main Street funded the streetlights along Main Street and then the, the streetlights and the trashcans, I mean benches, it wasn't a huge project, but they did that and with, when they did that, then when Caltrans came through, they put in the Highway 50 operational improvements to the tune of what, a mil, I don't know, 7 million, I forget how big that project was, 35 million or whatever, whatever, it just, it took a little tiny seed money and it ballooned into this huge project. So when I looked at this, that's what I was looking for, I was looking at, how could you take a project that might cost $500,000 or $2 million and propel it into something bigger? For instance, and I'll give you a specific example, there was, there is a property owner on Main Street that was willing, and his name is Greg and he owns Centro, and he was willing to put in a larger sidewalk at his expense if the city would grant him an easement to use the sidewalk for chairs, tables, et cetera, for his business. At the same time, the city would be able to put in, to fix the curb, the sidewalk between Centro and Placerville Newsstand and when, and so the thought was if the city could go ahead and do the bell tower section, then Greg and his partner would go ahead and rebuild the face of that building on, at Centro. So I'm thinking, that is a way to take a project, in your estimate, estimate costs $2.5 million, but now you get a public, you get a private business that's going to put in another whatever, $500,000 into his building and all of a sudden, you have a project that's now $3 million instead of $2.5 million. So I looked at these projects like that. I look at that Main Street, streetscape implementation and infrastructure as a huge, should be our city's huge prior, number one priority. So that was my number one priority. The Western Placerville Interchange is another one that has this incredible connection of different entities, EDCTC, Caltrans, you know, all these different, the courthouse, all these different things, when the courthouse, if the courthouse stays in the city of Placerville, it's huge for the city, it needs to stay in the city. So that's my number two, I mean, I could easily go one, two, it doesn't matter to me, but that one, the Western Placerville Interchange and the Broadway, that improvement of Highway 50 and Broadway Village connection to Spanish Ravine could do so much for Broadway that I, I just, I see those as, in my world, those to me are the ones that we should really focus on because we can leverage whatever money David Church gives us. These will directly encourage other investments in these areas. And I, sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek, I know, I know that that's a huge issue, but I know that there's money for that. We've found it before and we can find, I've written tons of letters in support of that kind of a project and I know that we can get that. And $8.5 million for a public safety building is just, to me, is expensive, so expensive, I can't, I just can't, I don't know, I would have a hard time with that one, but anyways, that being said, that's what, that's where I would go, is the three, the ones that can leverage more, can give us more bang for our buck.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Hagan?
I'll wait till you two finish.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Okay, so we're going to go through the three, okay. My top three, the sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek, because if we can avoid fines that we always seem to get, that should be a no-brainer. As far as the City Hall and the public safety building, having toured the building, it can, we can't be in there forever and something's got to be done. I think that keeping it where it is and looking at the land, that's that little sliver and then this, and if we could find, and then using the old City Hall revenue, I think, I would like to keep City Hall. I think that if we could renovate it or restore it, hang on to it for however long we can, but maybe lease it out, I, I happen to like the idea of renting or leasing it. And those are my top three.
All right.
Which ones?
Old City Hall.
Old City Hall, safety and-
Public safety and sewer pipe.
Okay, so you want me to go next, Vice Mayor?
Please.
Okay. All good comments. I also looked at which has the most potential economic benefit on these projects and I agree with Councilmember Wilkins that the Main Street infrastructure and the streetscape implementation is just right up there. The road is horrific, it creates an unfavorable-
Carol.
What did I say?
You said Carol.
Oh, sorry about that, Carol, sorry, thank you. The road is horrific, it creates an unfavorable impression and I love the fact that this project is a doubleheader. We can fix our infrastructure and improve the look of the economic vitality of our town, which then paves the way for just a whole host of other benefits. And it's been a while since I'd seen the diagrams of this and it's pretty phenomenal. If you take a look at it- If you take a look at it, um, what it would create spaces and public places and just the, the aesthetically, um, pleasing amenities that, that just makes the town a, a beautiful place to be, is just exciting. And I think the, um, the two point five five million would more than pave the way for just, it would be the catalyst, um, for our economic vitality. I also agree that we have to move forward, in, to my opinion, with the Western Placerville Interchange, we're in the middle of it. It, we're partway through, it has major implications, um, we can't have a project that's half-done, and that needs to continue to be a focus. And if we can support the Eldorado County Transportation Commission's vision on that as far as they're aggressively pursuing funding, if we can support that, I, I, I'm all for that. And then I mixed on my third. I see the potential in old Hiti- City Hall renovations, um, we certainly need to do something with it and, and, um, preserving our, one of our historical assets is, um, key to our community. And, and yet, we're also in the process, perhaps, of looking at the reuse of that area and, um, having a public process on that. So, I wouldn't wanna do anything that necessarily impedes that, although whatever we do with it will need to be renovated, so, I'm kind of a-
We need money.
Yeah, we need money on that. So, that, I think that is a very important aspect of our, our downtown assets. Um, and I agree with Carol that, um, the Broadway project does have, um, major benefits, especially for that edge of town. So, those are my three, and I'm, I'm torn on, on three, three and a half, yes.
Four.
It's three and a half, I'm torn. Thank you very much. Could go either way. All right, Vice Mayor Hagan.
Well, I'm gonna let you guys know, I'm totally confused. No, so, when I go back there, I'll do what the hell I wanna do and you-
You will anyway.
I, I didn't even give my priorities, I just-
I know, you just said, we're not gonna get it anyway.
I want David to decide.
Yeah, and I, I wanna correct something, uh, on Western Placerville Interchange, that initially, I believe the first grants were one of the John Driscoll budget trips. Um, we- Yeah, we were able to, uh, and if, I'm not sure if it was me or if it was, uh, when you took Bob Salazar back a couple of years before, uh, but-
Give the credit to Bob.
Yeah. But we did get some extra, additional funding, but that's on a transportation scale, and we're gonna, that'll be on my SECOG thing, and-
Right.
It'll be simple to do number one on that, because what happens if I walk in with David to one of the congressmen who I've already, who the other SECOG or the cap-to-cap group has met with, it just, it's like doubling down, you know, whatever that means.
Isn't that good?
That's good. That's very good. So, and, and I wanna see us keep going. We've, we've already got about ten minutes allocated this thing, I, we're, we're phasing it, and I think that's the key.
I do too.
Earmarks are no longer around, however, continuing funding is. Never mind, I'll tell you later. But we don't have earmarks any longer, we do, but continuing funding can work on this, and I think that's key, because this is a, it's on an interstate, it's on, uh, it has the, uh, the local, um, presentation and presence of the, of the Eldorado County Transportation Commission as well as SECOG, uh, because Sharon is on the committee for the Transportation Committee at Cap-to-Cap, so she's helping write those requirements. So, I know that'll be up there along with probably another project or two along Highway 50. Uh, the other thing I, I'm looking at on the Main Street infrastructure, when I looked at those plans, I thought those things could be phased, uh, quite simply. Start in the middle somewhere and, and move out to both ends, but I think before we start, the idea of the infrastructure first is key. So, if we can, uh, work on some grants, uh, in the water and sewer area, uh, so that we are able to do the other part, the visibility, if you will, or not correct thing, would be good. So, that's, that's one, two for me. I can go with just about anything else for number three. Public safety building, uh, I know we need to repair and expand and/or expand. Uh, I'm not sure, eight point four seems awful high to me, uh, but I'm not sure what kind of grants are available currently for, for public safety buildings, but maybe the chief has something in that area. But that's kinda what we're looking for. And then, none of, somebody said earlier, what kinda, David, David doesn't get the money, David just kinda points us in the right direction, it's not his wallet that opens up.
I know, but he knows where, you know, he knows what's-
He knows where the money is.
His wallets are loose.
And, and the reality is today, most of it is-
He's balled to get in.
Yeah, most of it today is not done at the congressional level, it's done at the, uh, department heads, uh, with those committees. Once the legislation is passed, they go, a big bundle goes there and then you gotta get it up. So, you get a percentage is gonna come out to each area. So, in transportation, uh, we'll be working probably with the Department of Transportation as well as the, um, congressmen who are on that Transportation Committee, uh, but they've gotta work on a reauthorization bill. But anyway.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, before I open up public comment, I, I just wanna thank you, Vice Mayor, for, for going and presenting our, our cause, and I also wanna acknowledge and thank the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, who is, um, sending you to Washington, that's saving the money, uh, for the city. And I know as much as Carl would like to take Driscoll discount tours, he's getting the whole kit and caboodle with the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, so-
Wendy, if you've ever been on one, I'm thinking-
I haven't, no.
The way Carl's going is-
Is the way to do it, huh? Thank you though, John, for saving the city money, we do appreciate it in the past. All right, so, appreciate you representing us, Carl. So, with that, we'll open public comment on this, on this item. If you'd like to comment, please come forward and give us your name. Good evening again.
Good evening again. I noticed that under the Main Street infrastructure and streetscape implementation, Attachment C has a roundabout in it, and what I'm wanting to know about that roundabout that you've got there is, um, have you allocated money for an EIR, and if so, how much?
Okay, we'll get that answered.
While I wait?
No, we'll close public comment and we'll get that answered, thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, Sue.
Sue Taylor, um, my concern is just some of these infrastructure projects, um, I think somebody kinda was alluding to design them before we build them, and I've been doing a lot of research on some of these roads, 'cause they're not turning out right, and they're having structural problems, and just the way they flow and don't flow and, uh, like the bike trail that's kinda condemned right now, and a few other things, and, um, you talked about that hometown feel and the, the arts and the look, and I drive now and I hate going through in front of the county offices. You see all those trees that have been just laying there dead, and you see on the other side how the, the, you have that mountain that doesn't have any, um, uh, topsoil. It's all, it's, it's, it looks like scarred earth, and is there anything in your plan to rectify the things that are happening in that area? Because I don't, I've, I thought Caltrans oversaw these projects, and what I'm finding out is that they're basically local control on these projects, and it's up to the local jurisdiction to make sure these things work out right. So, um, I'm having huge concerns with moving forward with more infrastructure that it's looking the way it is. So, I just hope we kinda be sensitive to that. You talk about the look and feel, and I'm not seeing it turn out so great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Sue, number two.
Sue Rodman. As a member of the Major Hage Committee, I very much think that one of our top three has got to be our infrastructure. The idea of paying twenty-five thousand dollars per day, per spill, to the Central Valley Water Quality Board, I think, is something we really want to avoid. Um, I think we are trading on borrowed time. We walk along the creek, along the trail, and you look at those sewer pipes, and they just don't look up to par. There are places where they've already been repaired, there are places where I just, I almost don't even wanna look, because that, that sewer pipe is not what I would think, even, even if it were good to have a sewer pipe in a creek, that sewer pipe is not looking too good. Um, I think we really need to do the Hangtown Creek and, and Cedar Ravine and get those pipes out of those creeks before we end up with horrendous fines from Central Valley Water Quality Board, 'cause they will not hesitate. We've already seen it, uh, in the city before, when they have handed us a nice fat fine, and we've been able to talk them down by saying, okay, we will do these kinds of projects to fix it. But if we are going out and saying, these are our top priorities and that's not in it, uh, we will be hard-pressed to get Central Valley Water Quality Board to back off again. So, I think that has to be one of our very top priorities, and I think that it needs to be done on the Main Street part as well. Just because it's under the street doesn't mean it can't leak, and it's not in very great shape there either. And if we're going to do a streetscape on Main Street without a roundabout, I hope, um, we need to have that infrastructure in place first. It's absolutely dumb to make it look pretty on the top and then have to rip it up. So, we need to do those as top priorities. For the, for the Western Placerville Interchange, we're in the middle of it. I sincerely hope that by the time they're all finished, it will look nice. I'm gonna wait with bated breath and see how it actually turns out, but I think that when you're in the middle of something is not when you pull the plug, you gotta finish it. And if it looks bad, uh, we will learn from that one for the next thing we have to do. Maybe with, that will teach us something about what we wanna do with Broadway. But I think those, those two are the top priority for me, and I would put the infrastructure, you know, neck and neck with finishing that interchange.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? All right, we'll close public comment and, and bring it back to the council, and unfortunately, let's get those questions answered. Ms. Verkamp's comments about, uh, the roundabout and the EIR, uh, Mr. Morris, do you wanna handle that?
There has not been specific funding allocated, allocated to the EIR for the Clay Street Bridge slash Cedar Ravine Main Street intersection. Um, however, the funding that is allocated for that project, the EIR funding, could come from that. So, it hasn't been identified specifically, and no project is moving forward at this time, however, we are working on something to bring back to the council. In fact, we plan on having, uh, in April, we have a neighborhood chat scheduled, uh, for the fifth Tuesday in April, and, uh, that whole project is, at least, uh, right now, is what we're intending to be the topic for that, uh, neighborhood chat, so.
Excellent, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. And, and I think, uh, Sue Rodman answered that, yeah, we are in the middle of the Western Placerville Interchange, and certainly we will be looking at ways to mitigate those landscape issues. Counsel, uh, Vice Mayor-
One other, one other thing on the, uh, on the Western Placerville, the, the work that, uh, with the, um, that the county's doing and DOT, uh, and the Caltrans coordination on the bike path and all of that work was, was Missouri Flat County property, project, not Western Placerville project. Okay, so, uh, the Western Placerville project is, yes, they've cut down some trees, uh, because it's this time of the year they can do it, but they can't bring back, you can come back up if you want, but I don't think we're gonna turn the mic back on, um, but-
We've closed public comment.
So, um, I was trying to answer your question, the trees are being cut down, uh, at this time of the year, because they don't wanna use any tractor work, because it's still winter, it's not, it's not, uh, construction season yet, so, uh, there's very, uh, very tough environmental, uh, costs if we do this, uh, cut the, cut the on-ramp on. So, anyway, the dirt part, that was a question.
Okay, and we can, Sue, we've closed-
Thanks, Sue.
-public comment, we, at point of order, and we can certainly have a discussion with that afterwards, so, thank you. Thank you for, we've closed public comment, and, um, thank you for that clarification, Carl. I think I'd like to, in light of some of the public comments, I think I would like to maybe change my number three, or three and a half. I think Sue Rodman's comments about our infrastructure, that infrastructure does come first before we build on top of that, and so, I think I, I would like to, um, to move my number three as, as the sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek, and also because in looking at old City Hall and the Broadway project, no design work has been done, nothing has been done, they're incredibly preliminary, they're just ideas and concepts. Design work has been done on this sewer replacement project, and it's a relatively small project that, you know, is, is nothing in a, on a federal budget, but would have major impacts and economic, or econ-
Economic impact.
Economic and environmental impact, so, I, I think that would be my number three. Any other council member comments? Councilmember Patton?
I, I wish I would've known the parameters of this sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek, because, because I actually believed that the sewer pipe was replaced from Clay Street West, from Clay Street West, and now I'm hearing that that's not the case.
No, I'm sorry, it, and if I misspoke, I apologize. From, you're correct in terms of the Highway 50 project, you know, commensurate with that was replacement of some, some segments of the, of the sewer line. There's a segment, uh, from Clay Street East, um, that, that remains in the creek.
So, this, so this proposal was from Clay Street East to where? Broadway to the, I call it the confluence?
Yeah, it goes to the confluence.
Okay, perfect, okay. Then I would move, I would move my number three to the sewer pipe. I just, I didn't know the parameters of it, I apologize.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Oh, yes, sorry.
That's okay.
Hi, Chief.
From, from above. That's all right.
Well, dress you up in a nice suit and you have a-
That's okay. Um, I, I thought I would just take a moment, uh, I, I know it may not have any bearing, um, on this, and it's not really intended to, except for perhaps just edification. For the past ten years, you know, I, I will repeatedly bring the public safety building project forward, it's, it, it's out there, it's, uh, something that, you know, eventually will have to be dealt with. I will bring it forward in the budget process as well as, you know, a capital improvement, and if nothing else, it's a placeholder, and, and that's one of the reasons I asked our city manager that it be on this list, is that, um, and I would just reinforce that if nothing else, I think this just needs to be a placeholder. That facility is rapidly approaching forty years old, it's really had no, um, if you will, remodels or, or updates, I mean, its basic, um, layout and use is very similar to forty years ago, other than some maintenance and replacement of painting here and there, and replacement of flooring here and there, and so forth, to keep it functional. And so, um, I, one repeated thing I heard is the cost factor, and, uh, bear in mind that, you know, eight point four million is kind of like a worst-case scenario when we're trying to present an idea. There's actually several alternatives that are probably somewhere in the neighborhood of three and a half million to eight and a half million kinda dollars. Worst-case scenario is, you know, starting from scratch, going out, finding a piece of property, engineering that, and then keeping in mind that any public safety building is engineered to an extremely high standard. I mean, the, the standard is, is essential facilities, and, for example, Office of Emergency Services describes that, you know, you're basically the last building standing in an earthquake or something like that, and you're, you're able to do some form of response or aid to the community. Um, so, bear in mind that, you know, costs are commensurate with that kind of building and, and planning and, and, uh, you know, structural integrity. Um, and then it ranges from, from, you know, a logical expansion of what we have to going out and trying to, you know, start from scratch, with the possibility that if we had to do something like that, there would be a value to our existing facility, you know, selling that, uh, recouping some of that loss and so forth. So, the report is fairly complete, as complete as a report like that can be at this point. Um, there was a needs assessment master plan, that whole process underway about ten years ago, um, and, uh, I've been involved in that process from the very beginning. When economic times were good, you know, four or five years ago, we were seriously looking for funding dollars and, well, with the hope that that project could start in some fashion, whether it be a phased project, which is possible, uh, or a complete, you know, ground-up project. So, with that, I mean, it, I, I appreciate your indulgence, um, you know, I realize that when we're looking for federal dollars and we're really prioritizing those things, we have to look huge and global, and I agree with Councilmember Patton, um, that, that's the way you gotta look at these projects, but I'm just asking you, you know, keep this in, in mind, keep it, uh, uh, on the, on the burner somewhere, um, keep it as a placeholder as things go forward, there, there will be opportunities to look for the right kind of funding for this kind of a project. So, that's my two cents, and that's, uh, thank you for the time.
Well said, Chief, thank you. All right. Would anyone care to make a motion tonight? Would anyone care to make a motion tonight? I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Wilkins.
Okay, well, I'm glad that Sue said, we're living on borrowed time. Because that's something, I was trying to spit that out and I didn't have the words come to my, but yes, I agree. And as far as the cityscape and the beautification, I think that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And what is beautiful for our city to some people might not be what the rest of the community or certain members might not agree is the vision is beautiful. And I'm gonna leave it at that. I've said my three, my top three.
And I'm gonna give my numbers.
Okay. Councilmember Borelli?
I'm gonna go again with the Western Placerville Interchange. I really think we need to support that, the Old City Hall renovation and the sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek.
Anyone else want to adjust their numbers?
Yeah, so the way I look at it, we've got five for Western Placerville Interchange.
We have four.
Four.
Well, Tricia didn't vote for it.
Yeah.
She didn't.
Tricia did.
Sorry.
We got five for the sewer pipe.
Yeah, five for the sewer pipe, four for the-
Four for the Main Street?
Four for Western Placerville.
And four for Main Street?
No, Patty didn't vote for Main Street, three. But that's the one, two, and three.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You want to clarify the motion, Councilmember Patton?
I'd make a motion that the top three focus projects for grant funding that Councilmember Hagan take to cap to cap would be, number one would be the sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek. Number two would be the Western Placerville Interchange. And number three would be the Main Street Infrastructure and Streetscape Implementation.
I'll second that.
Number one is the sewer pipe in Hangtown Creek. Number two is the Western Placerville Interchange. And number three is the Main Street Infrastructure and Streetscape Implementation. And let it show that that's the way the vote was, that it was five to four to three. Those are the top three vote getters.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Patton and seconded by Mayor Mattson. And with that, do we, is this a roll call vote or?
Are you gonna, I just have a question.
Yes.
I thought that the, when you talked about the sewer, the sewer pipe, that you also talked about that Main Street, the infrastructure.
That's a part of that. That's a part of that.
In this report, they're two separate things.
Right, but I thought that that, you know, that's what you talked about is going after, for both of them.
They're separate projects. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Well, that was fun. Thank you.
It always like spending virtual money.
Yeah, good discussion and we wish you well, Vice Mayor Hagan, we are counting on you. All right. Now we can move on to council reports and requests for future agenda items. All right, Councilmember Patton, we will start with you.
I have a question and it came up tonight before I get into what I actually did over the last two weeks. And that has to do with the proclamations. How is it that they come to you and you sign them and then, I mean, or you present them here? Because I didn't know anything about the King's proclamation or really pretty much any of the proclamations. And I actually have to say that I did have some questions along the lines of Evelyn's questions about why are we supporting the Kings? I mean, because they have used a lot of public monies. And so is there an opportunity for us to look at those proclamations before the mayor signs them? Or is that just something that happens at a staff level?
Mrs. Zito, would you like to answer that?
A proclamation is purely ceremonial and it's the mayor's prerogative. There's no legislative weight to a proclamation. It's, I guess for lack of a better term, public relations. We get requests, we forward to the mayor for all sorts of things. Some we do, some we don't. Sometimes we get things that are more of a national level, we try to keep it fairly local. We try to stay away from support of legislation, taking one side or another. So it's pretty benign. We were asked by Mayor Johnson's office of the 22 cities in the area, theoretically, are we in support of keeping a major league team here for the economic vitality of Sacramento? As the mayor said, we're not getting into the financing of it, that's for the city of Sacramento to do, but theoretically. So it's, as I said, holds no legislative weight, it's purely ceremonial. And it's the mayor's prerogative, so when it's-
It's your turn, it comes to you.
It comes down to the mayor.
Yeah, Buck stops here, exactly. And I don't see the proclamations, I mean, you don't see the proclamations until, you know,
Until they're done.
Until your mayor, I mean, as a council. And so I was that way last year too, and so it is the mayor's prerogative.
Well, also, in the past, as a council member, I have requested proclamations for different events and things. So which, so-
So you can initiate them as well.
So you request them to the mayor?
No.
Request them to?
And not all proclamations come to the council. The mayor, because of the ceremonial duties associated with the mayor, sometimes is asked to go to ribbon cuttings or what have you, and we prepare proclamations that are given at those events. Because it doesn't take a motion or a second or anything else to approve a proclamation, it's simply ceremonial.
That was a really good question though, yeah. Yes, please continue.
I just wanted to say that I had the privilege of attending my very first LAFCO meeting ever. And it was absolutely grueling. And, you know, for a first-time person to go, and it's not like I've never been to a public meeting before, but to have an agenda, a staff report that was over 100 pages long was absolutely insane. And then to have, and then to have the people, I mean, just the players in the meeting were, it was very overwhelming. And I'm hoping that they're not all like that because it was a 5:30 to 9:30 meeting and I was told, oh, they're only an hour long.
Maybe half hour, usually.
Well, it wasn't. So anyway, so that was my-
She just got lucky.
That was my exciting, my induction to the LAFCO. And I have to be honest, I kept looking at it going, and this is the taxpayers' dollars at work. I just, that's all I could look at, so. Anyways, I'm hoping my next one will not be quite so controversial. But it was very interesting listening to the Calpers' contract between LAFCO and Calpers and LAFCO and the county and the county auditor and the LAFCO executive director and the chairman of the commission and the dialogue. And, I mean, it was very, very interesting. I'll leave it at that.
I've got news for you, the next one's gonna be about as bad and I'll be with you. Councilmember Borelli?
Well, fortunately, my meetings were a little better than that. I met with, we did interviews with Parks and Rec, interviews for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I was at transportation meeting, Transportation Commission meeting, Transit Commission meeting. And then, as I said earlier, met for the walk on Upper Broadway and Lower Main. And then we went to the Transportation Office and talked about sidewalks in Placerville. And it was very, very interesting. So you're gonna get, you'll hear all about it.
Thank you for taking part in that, appreciate it.
So can I ask a question on this walking? Was there any mention of the non-motorized transportation plan? I mean, did that get brought up in light of this?
Yeah, absolutely. And the EDCTC, as I said earlier, and I give a real quick overview of what this is kind of about. The EDCTC was successful in getting, you know, this, it's basically a review and evaluation and assessment, if you will, of our pedestrian, both our policies and documents, but also our practices and physical facilities. And so yesterday, for example, much of the day was spent with this group, with consultants that were hired through UC Berkeley Extension to come and kind of give a third-party review of our state of our pedestrian friendliness, if you will. So the morning, we really spent focused on policy documents. And absolutely, the plans, the Broadway Multimodal Plan, Placerville Drive Plan, the Main Street Streetscape Plans, all part of what they're looking at, what they're, not so much critiquing the plans per se, but noting that we've made, as a city, made efforts to put those plans forth. And also looking at all of our policies and practices. And then the afternoon component of the meeting that council members Wilkins and Borelli participated in was involved in looking at a few specific areas. Obviously, we couldn't look at the whole city, but looking at a few specific areas where we have key pedestrian crossings and kind of giving, getting a third-party assessment and recommendations and ideas from this group as well. We expect that probably in about two months' time, we'll get a report back from this group with their recommendations, their suggestions, and their kind of assessment of the state of the city, as it were, with respect to pedestrians.
Thank you. Yes, did you have another comment?
I just have a question, a follow-up to the, so the document, the non-motorized transportation plan, that is an approved plan by the city, is that accurate? It's an approved document, correct?
That's right.
Because that, I thought, looked at the Placerville Drive, the Broadway area and the Main Street as well as the residential sections and the safe-to-schools, trouts and all of that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, A, approved and is somewhere living.
Correct, right.
People are looking at it. Okay, thank you.
Great. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Borelli and Wilkins for taking part in that important activity. Appreciate your time on that. Vice Mayor Hagan, I know you were in Hawaii, but did you do anything else besides lay on the beach?
Yeah, what'd you do?
I didn't lay on the beach.
What'd you do for us lately?
Visited with grandkids mostly and unfortunately, or fortunately, I did not have to attend any meetings. I'm glad I was no longer on LAFCO. But remind me of what my first nine meetings were like. And transportation, you went.
Yeah, and, yeah, then Patty. Thanks for nothing, Carl. All right, Councilmember Wilkins?
I watched the three new planning commissioners get sworn in and congratulations to the three of them and participated in the interviews for Parks and attended a Transit Board meeting, Patty, and the walk with Patty, which was a beautiful day, thank God.
Well, thank you so much. And had a lot of meetings on the homeless situation and various, plus all the commissions and interviews that we did. Always appreciated being a part of that. On the El Dorado County Transportation Commission, I just wanted to briefly say the main takeaway at that meeting was, we looked at the work projects, the scope of their workload for this next year. And I'd just like to acknowledge what a tremendously ambitious project list it is. What the El Dorado County Transportation Commission will be undertaking this next year ranges from the El Dorado Trail to the Western Placerville Interchange, work in El Dorado Hills on the Silva Valley Parkway, Francisco Drive, 50 El Dorado Hills Boulevard Interchange, as well as the Bay to Tahoe Tourism Impact Study, which will be very interesting, and the El Dorado Diamond Springs Livable Communities Project, among many others. And this is all done with six employees. And I'd just like to commend them for their efforts. They're a lean, mean, efficient machine and we're just very grateful to have them working in our county. So I'd like to acknowledge that.
And they produce such results.
Oh, it's amazing, it's amazing. So I'd like to acknowledge their efforts on that. All right, items pulled from the consent calendar, there were none. City manager and staff reports, very exciting. And it looks like Mr. Yule and Chief Nielsen are starting us off. Good evening, Mr. Yule.
Good evening. Just like to share with you that good things are happening out at Lumpston Park. Saturday, April 13th will be the first day that Lumpston Park will be open to the general public. The reopening of the park coincides with the 26th Annual Spring Fishing Derby and Casting Contest that the Placerville Lines Club helps us out with each year. The free event starts at 9:00 a.m. for toddlers through the second grade for fishing, followed by children in the third through eighth grade, from 11 to 1. The Placerville Kiwanis Club will be serving free lunch for all in attendance. And we just want to encourage the whole community to come out and celebrate the reopening of the park.
What's the date again, Steve?
That'll be Saturday, April 13th. And the little guys start fishing at 9:00 a.m. And park visitors will see quite a few improvements throughout the park, including a new entrance gate that's been put in, renovated restroom facilities, a new playground surfaced, and we reestablished the whole picnic area. So we're really looking forward to opening it up to the community. In an attempt to encourage families to come back to the park after the event's over, we're posting some additional signage, reminding visitors that the park closes from dusk to dawn. And the entrance gate will be locked each evening. And so we hope that those improvements will encourage families back into the park. And I think that that goes a long way towards some of the comments earlier that if we can bring the families back into a healthy, active park, then some of our loading issues won't be so bad. So encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the new park.
Thank you for your efforts on that. The fishing derby is such a lovely activity for our community. And who said there's no such thing as a free lunch? It's here in Placerville, thanks to the Kiwanis Club. That's very exciting. And Chief Nielsen, did you have something else to report?
If the chief's gonna be there to cut the ribbon, I'm gonna warn him.
That's right, that's right. I may be there to cut the ribbon. The, Steve basically did a good job of summarizing everything. We've had several meetings, we've met out there, we've monitored the situation. It's been very helpful to have the fenced-off area right now where they're doing some of the renovation. Our key issues, which Steve already touched on, were signage and they're already improving the signage, and the use of the gate. We really want to see that gate closed at nighttime for the public safety factors. Of course, you know, our mission, reaching out, community policing and so forth, is to see families in the park, to do our extra patrols, especially in hours where, the after-hours part of it, where there may be problems. So we'll be able to extra patrol the park and show a presence there. And I think Steve has covered everything else. I think a good plan to reopen the park, the items that have been upgraded and repaired and so forth speak well, hopefully, to the use of the park. And we're prepared to support that with enforcement and presence and we'll proceed from there. And then again, like you've already touched on, Mayor, that is, you know, a strict enforcement of no illegal camping. That's the stance we're taking.
That's right.
As much as we possibly can throughout the community, especially in that area where it's been a problem. And that will be a focus of what we do going forward, especially with the reopening. With that, if there's any questions, be happy to answer them. But we've worked well together and we look forward to the opening of the park.
And we appreciate the resources that it takes to keep that policy established, really appreciate it. Councilmember Patton?
Steve, has there been any conversation, keeping in mind trying to attract families or other entities to the park, about establishing a horseshoe tournament there? Because it's one of the few parks that we could have more than one or two horseshoe pits.
We haven't discussed that in quite some time, but it's not to say that we couldn't, I couldn't agendize that for a Recreation Parks Commission discussion.
Neighbor's shaking her head.
Well, anyways, I just, I think that that would be at least a topic for discussion.
Right, it's a good idea.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
I just have one, it's back to Parks. I know several meetings ago, probably last year, we had a issue with smoking in the last summer around the pool. And we were gonna take that to the Parks Commission and talk about some of the rules in our parks about the smoking. And I know that there is a distance thing around the pool. But in particular, I was thinking that if nothing else, the small park, I think called City Park, where the pool is, couldn't that be made a family-friendly, non-smoking park? Because it has the tot lot, it has the pool, it has a little picnic area in the middle. And I know the distance between the two, where the little kids are and the pool is, there is a smoke area, if you will, that has a tendency to be, yeah, the wrong kind of stuff. And I know it's difficult for the police to get there because by the time they drive up, they're gone. They're done, they've got their permits or whatever. But I'm just thinking, keep it simple, just that one. But I'm just thinking, keep it simple, just that one park as a, you know, as a non-smoking thing, without having a whole bunch of regulations and stuff. And I think the other thing, the key thing around the playground equipment area where the little kids are, I assume we have regulations now that we can post in all of those parks around the tot lots, around the equipment, the swings and the play equipment. We don't have too many swings, but...
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Great. Fabulous. All right, goal-setting workshop, Mr. Morris.
Mayor and Council, this item I wanted to put under, in your, Dave Warren referred tonight to the budget schedule calendar that we put out earlier, and that had on it actually a date. That date has come and gone, it was March 6th. There were some problems with that date. But anyway, I wanted to simply bring this up, just kind of have a brief discussion about, you know, would you like to have a goal-setting workshop prior to getting to the budget? And maybe just briefly, what are your expectations? What type of format would you like to see? Just the council? Do we combine another commission or anything with it? I'd just like your input on that, and then I can put something together based on what you'd like to do. But we do need to do it, it would be desirable if we're going to do it, to do it prior to the budget workshops, which will be coming up in May. So that leaves us pretty much the month of April that we could look at doing something. We have other things, as you know, the Neighborhood Chat, and then other workshops we've talked about tonight that we want to do also. So keeping that in mind, I'd just like your input on how you'd like to proceed with that, if you would like to do a goal-setting workshop.
I'm gonna start. I think the workshop for the Economic Development Advisory Committee will be setting goals for our community, and economic ones. And I, you know, I don't think we need to meet for the sake of meeting, and that would be my, my take would be to maybe forego this workshop and do the goal-setting, or the economic workshop with our committee. That's just my feeling. Yes, Councilmember Patton?
Thank you. When I was a planning commissioner, I always appreciated the opportunity to sit with the council in a more of an informal setting, and we heard it tonight about how do you integrate the planning commission, what their task is with the goals of the community or the goals of the Economic Development Committee. And I think it would be prudent to have the planning commission come to this workshop, this, the EDEC workshop. So I'm hoping, if we don't do a separate goal-setting workshop, that we certainly encourage the commission, because they do so much of the implementation of those goals. I think it'd be great.
Good comment.
But I do appreciate not meeting for the sake of meeting.
Councilmember Borelli.
And I agree with Carol about, in fact, I was gonna bring it up, too, that we invite the, that the commission, the planning commission be a part of that. And I agree with you that I think it, I think through that, we pretty much can see our goals.
Yeah, exactly, and the budget workshop.
Exactly.
Councilmember Wilkins?
I agree.
All right.
Okay. We'll look at some dates and start putting that out there, see what we can establish for a date, and get it back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Spring Community Cleanup Day is at that time already, Mizzito. My goodness, that's such a great thing.
We'll be having the cleanup starting at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, June 15th, at the Mosquito Park and Bus Facility. It'll go till 2:00. I think everyone kind of knows the drill now, is to, there are some traffic issues on Mosquito, but we'll try to keep, with a couple more volunteers, the offloading a little bit faster, and see if we can't get the cars moving in and out. It is also the weekend of the county fair. I've checked with Mindy Jackson to be sure that that was not a shuttle spot, and it is not. And I think the bulk of all the activity is gonna be on Placerville Drive, so I don't think there'll be any conflict, but just a heads up that it's a busy summer weekend. So we'll get the flyers circulated, and hopefully, the Mountain Democrat maybe can give us some publicity about the event. And we'll keep reminding the public at the meetings that it's coming up on June 15th.
Thank you for that. And thank you for all your work on that, as well as our city staff that volunteers for that.
As well as her husband.
Exactly. It was really, really nice community amenity. All right, and upcoming items. Mr. Morris, would you like to go over that?
Just, you can see what they are there. Couple of them, the caregiver ordinance and the water conservation ordinance are still possibilities, but not for sure gonna be on there. But they're something that's on our radar that we are going to bring forward. And then the public hearing for the El Dorado Trail, mitigated negative declaration, and then we'll be asking you to approve our CDBG project list, so that we can get that. I think the application due April 11th, is that the right date, Mike? April 11th, it's due? So that'll be your last opportunity, and we're actively working on that, and we'll have that prepared for you at that meeting.
Well, that sounds exciting.
Is there any chance that could be prepared or given some advance warning? What's on, is on that CDBG list? No?
Define advance.
That would be a no, I think.
Yeah.
You say you're actively working, but you obviously have some things...
Well, yeah, I can tell you what we're looking at. As you know, we held a public meeting a few weeks ago. I forget the exact date. I look back at Michael Drobich, because he was our only attendee for that meeting. So we had a good discussion with Michael. And the projects we're looking at, you recall, last year, we applied for, or we started in the process of looking at a grant to replace water lines up in the Conrad Street area. However, due to income requirements, we did not, we're not able to pursue that grant. What we've done now is we have funded, as you recall, an income survey in that area, so that we can go after that project. The income survey is almost complete, and we will know whether or not we meet that income requirement for that specific area.
We missed it like by 1%, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was very close. The other projects we are looking at are, we're looking at some planning and technical assistance grants that we will possibly look at. One is the study that we discussed about Old City Hall, as far as determining what exactly needs to be done to it and what the cost may be. So not engineering plans, but that...
Stabilization plan.
Yeah, kind of up to engineering plans, what the cost would be. So funding to look at that. And then, help me out, Mike, I'm trying to remember what...
Some other ideas that we would bring to council for consideration, they conclude the possibility of a community-wide income survey. Right now, just based on census data, the city as a whole can't qualify for applying for CDBG grants. So we have to do it, such as the example Mr. Morris gave with Conrad Street, is we have to go out and, for any project area, do a, kind of a neighborhood-specific income survey. So one concept is to do a community-wide scientific survey to see if the whole city might be able to qualify for CDBG grants, so that for future CDBG cycles, we can apply and not have to do that kind of survey each time. So that's a possibility. Looking at the potential for grant funds, funding that would provide the city the opportunity to provide grants for, or loans, I'm sorry, for housing rehabilitation projects, particularly oriented maybe towards lower-income households. The, also looking at, you know, the concept of Placerville Drive form-based codes, which we had previously been awarded a grant for, but the funding never came through, not through CDBG, but through another source. But the funding never came through for that. So that's another idea. So those are some of the other concepts that we have been kicking around.
Just quickly, I'll mention a couple of things on that. There's basically, there would be two major ones, which would be the Conrad Street waterline replacement, and then the housing rehab. And then the others are what we call planning and technical assistance grants, and we can go after two of those, and I think we've got three on the radar that we could possibly do. The one to note, I'll just quickly note, on the citywide income survey, if that were funded, we would go ahead and do it. The negative to that is, if it comes out and shows that we do not qualify, we have to repay the money.
Oh, ouch.
So that one, we're gonna have to think real hard whether or not we decide to go after it. But those are the projects that we're looking at right now for CDBG.
Well, we will look forward to that. And with that, we will close. Adjourn to the next regular council meeting that will be held on March 26, 2013. 5:00 p.m. closed session, 6:00 p.m. regular. Good night.